She just got up coming.
She's running late, so I'm gonna start chairing the meeting. If you guys want me to start rolling? Paul, you want me to start? Yeah, alright. Instructions on exiting the building in the event of an emergency, you go out the door, go left, there's an entrance right there, or you can go right, there's an entrance on the front of the building. Number two, agenda additions, deletions, or changes in the order of agenda items, anybody? No, okay, hearing none, we will move on to number three. Open to the public for items not related to the agenda. And we have one member of the public in the audience live.
Yes, Ryan Doyle.
I've not had to come up to the screen to turn on that.
That?
So that people at home can hear you.
Awesome, thank you, so it vaguely relates, but not specifically to, well, specifically to the comprehensive plan, but it's not a section in it. There, it's so cool to watch it flesh out and have so much more concreteness in the bullet points in this version of the document. But one thing I noticed is that words like transparency, accountability, communication don't appear very much in it. And I know that those words can be really charged, but in a world where things change really, really fast, a lot of that stuff falls by the wayside by mistake. Especially in the digital world, there are so many webpages, for example, on the city website that are completely outdated, but don't say so. They tell you to email a staff person who doesn't work for the city anymore, for example, or a program that's no longer a part of the city. And so I really want to, obviously, we're pretty late into the planning of this stage, but I really want to challenge people to think about how the way information is accessible to the public and accurately accounted for can be really empowering to draw engagement, which I think it's just in the community section briefly mentions that. But really, I think there's the capacity for a whole page to be fleshed out between now and final approval, that really gets to not just how our physical infrastructure or departments work, but also how our digital infrastructure interfaces with the public. Again, sorry for that being last minute, but I'm happy to provide notes later by email if people request. And just think about that, thanks.
Thank you, Ryan. I believe our next meeting is all about listening to the public, isn't it? For the comp plan?
Yep, so our next meeting is a public listening session, and we have a few, we have three other listening sessions. I think Ryan's point is more that something should be in the plan about doing that kind of stuff.
Alright.
Anyone who's not familiar with the auditorium, or have been in here once or twice, to turn on your mic when you're speaking, and we kind of recommend if you're not speaking for a little bit, turning it off again, so that other people, you're not kind of shuffling papers or something that interferes with others.
Well, and I just think that Ryan's comment is really pertinent, and it's been pertinent for a long time, that our website, we really have to do a better job keeping it updated. Because it, you get, it leads to misunderstandings and outright misinformation when it's not.
Yep, I mean, I can say from the planning side, where there are some things that Ryan's mentioned that are remnants, but for the, this city plan process, we've been doing our best to update as soon as we can. So like the drafts page is up to date and was within minutes of when I sent you the packet last week. But there are definitely bits and pieces here and there, the website honestly could use a pretty good combing through, but that's something that's for the whole city as well as our department.
Alright, could I ask everybody to do what I'm doing, which is speak right into the mic, because I left my hearing agent home? I'm sorry about that. Okay.
Thank you, Michael, I appreciate that, because if you don't speak into the mics, I can't hear you.
Okay, Sue?
We'll do that.
Announcements and staff report. Any announcements from commissioners? Donna?
Yes, one announcement, and I think people will want to check up on this on their own, but it's a, the Public Service Commission has issued the case number 232021, 2221, which is the act, well, the clean heat standard, basically the proceedings that will develop the clean heat standard, if anybody wants to be either involved or even on the contact list for those proceedings, which will last like three years or something. They're asking by the 21st to submit your name to the commission, to the Public Utility Commission clerk. And I have a copy here if somebody wants to look at it, because it's fairly brief. But since so much of our climate action stuff is based around fuels, fuel choice for homes and businesses, that's a really critical piece of it, without that working functionally and very efficiently, we're not going to get there, you know, so it's very much related to our city plan.
The chairperson is here. We can finish with any staff announcements?
I don't think I have anything, just the point was made earlier about the public listening sessions, I just kind of take any opportunity I can to remind everybody of when those are and to get them again in the public record for anyone who's watching this video, either now or later. So our next regular meeting, July 25th at 7:00 PM, will be a public listening session, it will be open to the public for any comments about any part of this draft, with the intention that no discussion, barring some factual clarifications or small questions like that would happen amongst the commission, it was just listening to the public. And then there were three additional sessions, two are noon sessions, one is on the 27th and one is on August 1st, those are Thursday and Tuesday. And we also have one on Saturday the 10th, or Saturday at 10, which is Saturday the 29th. I said that in the most confusing way possible, but the information, it's all there, I promise.
Is it on the website?
Is it on the website?
It is, should be on the website, it's been published in the other paper twice. It is, went out to all the front porch forums yesterday, and it's going to go in this week's city news as well.
Does that take care of number five? No. Updated city plan outreach schedule. Did you just describe that?
Think I did.
Just a couple of things to add to that, Jessica is scheduled to give a update to city council next Monday on behalf of the work that you've done so far, so their appraise, that'll be happening in a public meeting. And then staff was invited and will be attending the August 3 Rotary Club meeting to talk, to give them an overview of the plan at the Rotary, and so there may be some additional ones as organizations reach out, we're happy to share the word and give folks the opportunity to provide input all along, so.
And it actually doesn't take care of number five. Looking back at number five.
Trying to shorten the agenda here.
Well, I can just take care of it now, the only other things were August 2nd, we've set as a public, a written public comment deadline that is applicable to members of the public, it's also applicable to our volunteer committees, that's what I've given them as deadlines for their written feedback, we also have some outside entities, like we were talking with someone at the Department of, Vermont Department of Health, there's some people like that, that that's our our goal for some of those deadlines, in order for all of those to be in your packet for August 8th. The intention is August 8th meeting would be the discussion of all the public comments and how they should or should not be integrated, and how they should be integrated into the draft. There's potential for another planning commission meeting in August as needed, with again, the goal being August 22nd, you would, for August 22nd, you would receive the draft that reflected any changes from discussion at this meeting and on August 8th, hopefully to then move the plan to go to public hearing. So that's the, that's the schedule, there is a tiny bit of flexibility in the 22nd. We could still go into the next week and have a special meeting the next week. However, what that does is it removes a week that you would have at the, after the formal public hearing. So you either have a week, an extra week to consider formal public hearing comments and any other additional changes before it goes to city council, or you have that week in August, it can go in either place. That should take care of number five.
Now I'm going to turn it over to Jessica.
Thanks Duncan, sorry I was late, I've been dealing with flood stuff all day, just very sad. There's a lot of parts of the state that are in rough shape floodwise today, so. I guess one thing I wanted to just mention or kind of clarify going into item six, which is when we talk about our items. You know, the way it's written in our agenda says that we would get a draft on August 22nd that has the changes we made tonight, plus the changes from, you know, kind of everything we discussed from the public comment. I think how we do that maybe is a little bit up for discussion, like I feel like, you know, we're having a discussion tonight about possible changes, but it'd be nice to be able to circle back and like weigh them in in conjunction with what we hear from the public during the public sessions too, so I guess I feel like I want to make sure that like what we're talking about tonight, we don't, we're not like so set on that we're not willing to like consider the public input with tonight's discussion before we go back out to this official public hearing draft, so. So maybe it makes sense to have some kind of summary of tonight's discussion at the August 8th time period, I don't know how you, how you're kind of picturing that coming back, Kelsey, with, I know it's like an organizational nightmare to have like the public draft and then like things we're talking about now, and then public comment, like, I don't know.
Right, so what we're trying to balance is having the public and our other committees and other entities have a static draft that they're not thinking that they're kind of shooting at a moving target. So having the same draft be what we gave everybody last week, be the draft that people feel they can make comments on, because the reason we, we gave sort of three weeks before a meeting was so that people have time to read and digest a fairly long document. So I guess I, what I'm going to be doing through this meeting is I've set up sort of a parallel document that I'll be taking sort of inline notes, and so I will have everything that the commission has discussed and agreed upon today in a document, I will not be considering that as a new draft of the plan, but it will have a track changes version that, and possibly comments on the side that reflect the discussion today. I would, I don't want this to appear that this commission is making changes that the public doesn't have a chance to comment on necessarily in this, in the public comment sessions in the next couple of weeks, so I would recommend that that, I can send the track changes from what happens tonight out in the packet for August 8th, for everybody to sort of consider again, in the light of considering all of the public comments and hopefully attending one or two of the listening sessions as well, so that you're looking at both the changes that you've talked about today, but then also in the framework of the comments that you've received from the public during the listening sessions. So it's not like today's decisions are set in stone, it's here's where, where you all are still in the frame of thinking through this document and making it your document. But if you, if there were public comments that were contrary or required some more refinement of things that happened today, that's something that would be discussed in that whole context on the 8th.
So that makes sense, so I guess I almost see them as like, these commissioner comments from tonight will also be kind of up for possible rediscussion if need be.
Yeah, they kind of go, they go in the mixing pot with with the, with public comments, and you know, certainly it's the commission's edits and comments have, have weight to them, but considering them in the context of everybody else's comments, I think is important at this, at this point.
So do I hear that on the 8th in the packet will have the changes that we discussed today as a separate document?
Yep.
The static document and the information that comes out of the public meetings side by side, so we can look at them all and then make decisions on them on the 8th, is that correct?
More or less, yes, I may not resend the static document because you've received it in the packet, I just don't want you to receive a 300-page packet. But if you'd like me to do that, I can. I figure if everyone has the packet for this meeting, you have that draft, and then the pack, it will say that in the memo and explain that, just so that the PDF isn't enormous.
But our comments tonight won't be incorporated into the static draft, they'll be separate.
Right, they'll sort of be like a
An addendum.
Yeah, it's sort of, it's sort of the commission's comments, the commission's written comments on the static draft.
Could that all be integrated into one document? Different colors representing the public commentary and what we do today? Plus, you know, in the draft.
Not.
Looking at three documents.
I guess I see it as two things, one is the static draft with track changes and comments from tonight, so we'd be able to see in, you're kind of almost looking at the static draft and our comments at the same thing, because you know, you can see them in the different colors and the strike-throughs, so that's one thing. And then the other thing would be like essentially a running list of comments or pages, you know, if there's letters that we received, so it'd be like one kind of packet of comments and one draft with the markup of things we've.
And something that we're doing with the written, any written comments that we're receiving is that we're categorizing them and putting them into an Excel sheet, so that if someone sends in a written comment and talks about housing, but also about the environment, but also about bikes, it won't, every single comment won't have to be gone through separately, we'll be taking those different topics and putting, clustering them together under, you know, bikes. Yeah, so that you'll be looking at all the public comments that are about bikes together, even if it means, even if it's splitting up a letter into a few, a few different places.
One question that we do have that's related to what Kelsey just said is you're going to be receiving oral comments as well. Would you like for us to integrate the oral comments in with the written comments? So that you don't have a fourth, fourth thing, we could put those into the Excel sheet by topic, so that at least you can, you know, get the public comments all in one place regardless of the mode by which they did it.
Yes.
Okay, great. And just a request of you all, if any member of the public sends something to you that you would like to pass along to the whole commission, send it to us so that we can put it in there, sometimes folks might feel more comfortable sending it to one of you than the group or to staff, we want to make sure that everybody is captured. And then if the one thing we will not be incorporating is if somebody makes a comment to a third-party entity, we're not going to try to go out and get, you know, if somebody writes a letter to the other paper or posts on front porch forum or social media, we're not outwardly hunting for that, they'll need to send them to you or to us in order to be incorporated.
And we've also been given the same general instruction to the city council, because we know that some people know who their counselors are, who may not know who the commissioners are, and so they may approach different counselors and provide thoughts, so they have the same instruction.
Any questions or comments on that process? Okay. Then I guess we can just dive into item six, which is our draft, and we did just describe the part about how we're handling tonight's comments. We did get a few things by email. And I know other commissioners or all commissioners may have specific items they want to just bring up in general as part of the meeting, I think both are equally good, so you know, just because you didn't email something in doesn't mean you can't bring it up, just want to be clear. Fran?
Yeah, just a question, so if we send it by email, if it's a document, we don't need to re-say those things again tonight?
I think there's different levels, so, you know, in years, I think there were some that were wording changes or typos and things like that, those are things that you know, I think we can all agree if there's a typo or something spelled wrong, like they should just be incorporated, but if it's like a policy change, I think we want to at least touch on them, you know, just, that's what we've been doing so far. So anyone can go first, I don't know if anyone's.
I'll go first.
Super excited. Michael wants to go first and Laurie wants to go first.
It's about the introduction page, which I sent a note late, which shows in red what my, my notes and records showed as what we approved back in, I'm not sure whether it was the last meeting or the meeting before. It's slightly different to what is in the current draft. Certain things are missing, but I thought we had agreed. And certain words, or the layout, we, did we agree to eliminate the sort of subheadings which were in in italics, I thought we had left them like that. And what's missing is the, the bold type stuff that I had, that we had at the very beginning about the threat from the warming planet and climatic changes, and that action on the climate, on climate change is the most important goal in this plan. Then what was added was South Burlington also holds high the following values in every action we take as a community, which wasn't in the original that we approved. Thoughtful and sustainable built environment. Housing wasn't in the original. We had neighborhood parks, facilities, and infrastructure. Which was Paul's heading and then the text. And in collaborative and engaged, I thought we'd had make planning decisions that explicitly, because this is a planning document, that explicitly considered, and the rest is what we had before. So I was wondering why we were missing those things.
Well, under collaborative and engaged, my notes specifically say no change.
So the words planning and explicitly were missed, were agreed to be left out?
Well, I think they were just never added. Did we, did?
Are you talking about the last sentence?
Yeah, that.
Make decisions considering future implications.
So I'm not sure, I mean, we could add them, I suppose, but.
Can we start at the, at the bold stuff at the top?
Yep.
And just work our way down?
I think that.
Because my understanding was the bold stuff was going to be included, it was in a sort of overheading that Michael had put sort of above the the dot, yeah. But I thought we'd agreed to include that last week, two weeks ago.
So just this stuff in the super dark red. I agree, I think Donna said she liked that specifically, and then we all did some head nodding, maybe. Is that where it would go though? Where Michael has it?
Instead of in bold at the top.
So I think, and Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what you did is you took the, and I have mine printed, you took the page from our static draft, and then you added things in red that you think are missing.
I, I put, I juxtaposed them with what's in the current draft, so what's in red, for instance, you know, climate resilient, then I put what I had, what we'd agreed below in red. So do I understand you're saying that everything above the bold red, the bold red is the starting of the document for you? And what's above it is being repeated below it? It's repeated in part below, which is the red introduction paragraph, which is one, two, three, four, five, six lines.
Yep.
Those other items came afterwards, should, should come after this.
Okay, so it would start with the bold red and then have your shortened introduction, which actually we did have that in.
You know, entering 2024, yes, we had that, and that paragraph was correct. The, we are also facing those, the next three paragraphs should come afterwards, because they weren't up there in the, in the draft we had approved.
I think maybe we weren't super clear about what we wanted to do last week, potentially. You know, because I think what staff had in the, has in the draft that they gave us today was.
Is this what you're saying, Michael, that you wanted to be doing?
I think you're crossing out the item that's right below it, yeah.
Is this what you're proposing to do? I just moved around what you said, are you looking to replace the first paragraph that was in?
No, leave that because it's exactly the same as what's in red.
No, it's not exactly the same.
Yes, yes.
Correct.
Followed by, I mean, above it.
Oh, I see.
And then you put the bold red above that. Above that, yeah. Above introduction.
Old section was like, in Michael's edits was like a header.
So, okay.
It's, okay, so if you start with my, with the bold red, the really heavy bold red, that would be the beginning of the page.
Whoops, I didn't like. Okay, so you're saying above the introduction?
Yep.
Yep, got it. So, essentially.
That'll go the way.
Delete this.
Well, those other three paragraphs that you'd, you know, where we'd start, we are also facing, and we face these challenges, et cetera, et cetera. I think they should stay in, but they should go after this introduction.
So something like, if it read like, I know I'm too zoomed in, but if it read like this, the bold language up top, then this, then the black text here also.
And then the, the four. He was suggesting the black text, text go below the four. Yeah, so go, those three paragraphs that you just go up to them again?
Yep.
They should go at the very end, after the bullets, after the last item, which is collaborative and engaged. It would go right before the South Burlington is now the second most populous city.
It's actually very, very similar, I don't know if you've gotten a chance to see, this is what he presented at the last meeting, I think it was in the, so he's basically, I think we had talked about it, but then it wasn't clear how it all fit on the page, but, so we're kind of circling back.
Just want to make sure that it's not redundant, because I noticed in reading through the whole thing, there's a lot of redundancies. And maybe it should be that way, because people won't read every section.
So Paul, go in right, right below collaborative and engaged.
Right, that's what I have here now.
I just think that a lot of people might open this, our city plan 2024 and not get much further than reading this. So, and it gives, it gives the whole message of what we want to do.
That seems.
Sure, I would just comment that I think that the sentence starting, we have a critical housing shortage in your red is repetitive, and the sentence after that is repetitive to the new, the black that was moved to after the four bullet points.
In which bullet is that?
It's not, it's in the paragraph, the introduction paragraph.
Oh, right.
Right, that's, it was the same thought with a little more nuance and just divided into two or three paragraphs, and having a little bit more.
That one, then the one that follows, you can delete if it's already included up here.
I, it's your document, commission, but I would argue that the two sentences in the introduction don't include everything that we're calling out as important in the other short paragraphs that are after.
No, I'm suggesting we should leave, we have a critical housing shortage in where it is, but the paragraphs that we face these challenges all at once, and the city. that we face these challenges all at once and the city plan is an expression should go at the end and we won't have a repeat.
No, I think what she's saying is that paragraph, the introduction, you have some of that is repetitive to the paragraph we're talking about.
Yeah. So delete the one we're talking about and leave that as it is.
I'm, I guess my, I guess my point, my argument is the, is to do the opposite. Cut it above and keep it below because there is more stated in the sentence below the bullets than there is in the sentences above.
I wonder if we could keep both. I mean, so I think, I think basically what this winds up doing, not deleting, and Paul, you have it deleted right there. Second, I don't think we agreed to that yet.
I was just showing it so that you're talking.
So it, it sounds like maybe no, but I think what it's doing is once you would actually like, kind of accept all changes, like you'd wind up with a page which has the bold red, some very short introductory remarks, which are very short and brief, and then your four goals with the little descriptions of each, and that's essentially going to be one page. And then then, and that's the front page. And then the next page, I, it seems kind of reasonable to have a little more information about these other critical things and then the rest of the introduction. I mean.
My thinking was that this paragraph touches the two most important challenges facing us. Climate change and housing. So they're encapsulated in that, in those five lines or six lines. Repeating it doesn't do any harm in my view.
So my other, my only other thought about all of this is that at the previous meeting, you had talked about the climate resilient goal being separated and elevated from the other three, and you've now put them all back together. And is that your intention?
No, we took out, we took out the numbers.
No, the, you had, you had asked us to elevate climate resilient as a, as a, as the highest of the four and that the other three were co-equal and lower. So that was the intention of that additional sentence that is now read struck through. South Burlington also holds high the following values. Because what you've done now is it's, and it's, it's fine if this is your intention, but what you've done now is they're listed as a set of four. And they are shown as, as being co-equal for.
Um, but if you go up, if you go up above to the, to the last sentence before the introduction, it says action on climate change is the most important goal in this plan.
Yeah, this is all absolutely fine with me. It's just, it's just not consistent with the direction I was given at the previous meeting. So if you're changing that, then that's fine. I just want to be totally clear with what you're asking.
I'm not wedded to, I mean, I'm okay if you want to leave, if the, the rest of you want to leave it in. South Burlington also holds high the following values. It just wasn't in the draft that we, that I thought we'd, we'd approved. I'm, that's why.
Correct. So that sentence was not in the draft that you had approved because it, the function of that sentence was to do the separating.
Let's not belabor it. We can leave it there.
I wasn't at the meeting, so I didn't take a vote on this. But in reading the introduction, I, I can see that climate resilient was moved to the top. I'm okay with that. I, I don't, for instance, the second paragraph here in the introduction, I think that's great. I don't want to lose that. I think that very explicitly explains one of the major issues we have. So I don't think that should be lost. And I'm not crazy about moving it down either.
No, I think we could stay with it, but the, the sentence that we're talking about that's up burnt and also holds high the following values in every action we take as a community. I don't mind leaving it there if that's the feeling.
Very well stated. Then, you know, and it, it's true.
Anybody else? And are, is everybody happy with that?
I think it makes clear the thing that you actually brought up.
Leave it in there. Leave it in there.
Um, Paul?
Two, two quick notes. One, I, I, just from a, a user who is not you perspective, there probably needs to be something to say what these four bullets are. It doesn't say these are goals. It just gives four bullets.
Oh, yeah.
It doesn't say this is our, these are the four, you know, this is the one and the three or something like that. There's no sentence that says what the heck this, these four bullets are.
I was going to bring that up around overall formatting. In, in the table of contents, we have introduction and then people, population, et cetera. But it seems to me that, that what we really have is on, on the second page, you talk about the city's vision statement. And it seems like this really encapsulates the city's vision statement.
That's, yeah, we didn't spend a lot of time on formatting, to be totally honest. We were trying to get readable document, but heard.
But I, I'd really like to see it so that this introduction is really a standalone and, and doesn't get lost into how to use the plan and topic section, et cetera. So that those are separate in the table of contents and
so.
Someone can, can go and go, ah, that's the, that's the, that's the meat and potatoes. I want to read that first.
So the, the, the table of contents was put together in the last few minutes to just have something you guys could click through. If you added the second layer of headings into the table of contents, it became a three-page table of contents. So there's some, there's some changing in the formatting, but there would be in some, some sections would have sub headers in the table of contents. We just did not have the capacity to go through that at the time.
What I'm hearing from you, Lori, is similar to the 2016 plan. There is one page that is the vision.
Yeah.
It's not just an introduction. It's the vision.
It's like, yeah, this is the encapsulation of what we're doing.
My other quick note to you, and this is just a, you know, Paul, as formerly an editor person, use the words, the world is facing an existential threat from warming planet. And then the next paragraph down says the, almost the exact same words. It's a, the sentiment, if it's your intent to repeat the almost the exact same words, that's perfectly fine. It's having two things right next to each other that say basically the same thing is a little redundant. But that's up to you all, which is why the language is in the introduction.
Because it's, so I, I will, I will say that I did take the edits and try to integrate them in a way that made sense with the writing. So that some of, some of these things were not, I didn't clearly get the direction, and that's on me, that the, the bold should be a sort of header, which I'm now understanding. I integrated it into the, the, the other pieces.
Personally, I don't think it's a problem that that it's repeated in, in, in different words. I don't have a problem with it. What I do like is the logo at the top of, at, on the first page.
Who wants this?
I know.
Exactly like he did it.
Yeah, just. That's a hundred percent doable. It just.
That could be. Integrated with that introduction.
I would just get rid of your introduction paragraph, put the bold above what's already here. Get rid of your introduction paragraph.
You mean the entry, entering 2024 thing?
Yeah, the bold, put that up top and then continue with what's already here.
It just has a little more, it has a few more words. But what your introduction, your introduction paragraphs is just a little shorter, I guess.
Yeah, I think it's, well, I just thought we should have climate action and housing in some, somewhere repeated because, and all the other challenges we will need to address. But I'm a single, I'm a solo voice, so I'm going to go with, with the majority on this.
I'm happy to see those two somehow cleaned up and put together, so it's not repetitive. What I don't want to lose is the last sentence above the introduction. I think that's very important to be somewhere in this so that it really, not only are we putting this number one, but we're stating it clearly.
So there is a sentence that says the overriding objective of this plan is to make every policy decision through the lens of climate resilience and reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. And that's how I.
I like that down.
How I phrased it.
I like that down there, but I'd like to see it right at the very top.
Okay. So I think what I'm, okay, what if I make a suggestion here? So the suggestion would be we get to have the logo, which seems to make, to make sense. And then the, this page would look like the bold red. So if you scroll up a tiny bit, Paul, the super bold red at the very, very top. And then when it has the word introduction, it would be the, the four little tiny paragraphs that are in the static draft, which is very similar to Michael's shortened version, but a little wordier, but it describes the fact that then these are goals. And then maybe the goals actually say the word goals also. So we have the bold red, the text that's in the draft and then the four goals.
Are those goals or are they the, the four phrases? Those are our goal, overarching goals?
I think we've been using the word values.
Values.
Okay, to represent sort of, it's not a, yeah, to say the, the, the way we think about things.
So if.
We're using vision. Did we get rid of vision?
There's a lot of different, we were saying vision and goals for a while, vision and goal statements for a while. When the feedback, when we had the feedback that the word objectives that are later was a bit too policy wonk, that, that the word goals was more understandable for those, then we had to pull goals out of the vision statements. So vision statements, guiding principles, values, all of those to me are perfectly acceptable. Vision, visions.
I think it needs to reflect, you know, these are the overarching, this is the backbone of this plan. Yeah. What, what, what is the word that gives it the most gravitas?
And that should be.
I, I like guiding principles, but that's just me because it's, it's showing, it's, to, to me, that reflects like, these are what informs all of our forward moving decisions and not just pie in the sky. You know, we, we, we wish we were like that. Yeah, it's, it's, here's what we're going to do. Here's how we're going to make decisions. But that's just, that's just how I think of those things. I think Fran had something.
And that is the reason.
Um, Fran?
Yeah, I just, so the, the sheet that you handed out, Kelsey, at the last meeting that, that Michael had submitted, we had the words vision and goals on that, on that page at that time. And so maybe they should be here.
Sorry, I was trying to figure out what was happening. What?
Right. So you, Michael had submitted a, a, a rewrite of this at, at the last meeting that, that we, and, and I'd made some writing on it. And it had the word vision and goals in bold underneath introduction before those bullets.
Sure. Yeah, we can add whatever headers, whatever headers the commission wants, but I don't think we can call it vision and goals anymore because we're using the word goals for something different. So it has to be, it has to be something other than the word goals. Vision statements works, values works, guiding principles. You know, there are a lot of other things that people can use for that as well.
I think guiding principles is pretty powerful. And if it was inserted as a header above those four items, it would really speak to what you were talking about Duncan. These are, this is, this is what's the foundation that we're trying to do.
Okay. How do people feel about guiding principles generally? Thumbs up? Okay, last. Guiding principles would be a heading right before the four bullets. And then are people okay with the, the four slightly larger paragraphs that are in the static draft versus Michael's kind of just shorter version? They would stay on this.
Whether they stay where they are or move down below the.
Yeah.
The guiding principle, either way works for me.
Okay. Cause I think Duncan was suggesting keeping them where they are because they're, you know.
I think it's fine for them to stay where they are and to add the South Burlington also holds high the following value in every action we take as a community. And then it really keeps the climate piece elevated, but also indicates the importance of, of those pieces as well.
Okay. Is that in there?
So we're almost back to where you were.
I was gonna say, are we back, back to where we started except with the bold?
Yeah.
Okay.
Pretty close.
Adding the guiding principles. And I think Lori's suggesting adding an additional sentence that's in.
No, that's in.
Oh, okay. Yeah. So basically all we're doing is adding Michael's bold. We want a logo and adding the words guiding principles.
So the stuff above the, above introduction is staying.
Yeah.
And, okay, it's fine.
And then it seemed like you also had a few, you thought there were a few words missing in the.
This is what I've.
Four bullets.
Just to make sure we're on the same page. I, I have to do some formatting. The word introduction doesn't have to have, have to be there, but there's a page break and I don't want to argue with Microsoft Word right now. But there's the, the bold, adding something like guiding principles, possibly saying something in here, clarifying guiding principles, leaving.
I thought guiding principles would go right above.
Wait, wait, wait.
Okay.
Right above climate resilient.
Yeah.
Yep.
Everybody knows exactly what those four bullets are.
Okay.
Because the stuff above that is just, yeah.
Part of the introduction, I think.
Yep.
Exactly.
Yeah, good. This is going great.
Okay.
I could make a comment. The very first line under the bullet, climate resilient. I think the, the sentence actually makes more sense if you stop with the word emissions.
And get rid of the keep the city safe.
Yeah, because it doesn't matter what you do. You know, you're not going to keep this city safe. I guess that phrase wasn't.
You just can't, you can't.
You can't do this with this document. It's, you know, it's, it's sort of out of our hands.
Sure. Yeah. I guess the only, and that's completely fine with me. I, the only reason it's included is as a explanation justification. It's not the right word, but it doesn't, it doesn't.
Somebody's going to object to it. Look, certainly if I objected to it, somebody else is going to object to it.
It's gone. There you go. Like magic.
And I think there's a lot of other reasons also why you would want to do the things in the first part of the sentence. I don't think we want to limit our goal to only keeping the city safe. So that's, it seemed reasonable to shorten the sentence. Okay. Seeing some nodding.
In thoughtful and sustainable built, the, the word housing was, appears to have been added. It wasn't in the original that I can see.
That was directly responsive to, I think it was Donna's comment about the importance of housing.
Right.
So that was, that was a specific addition that the commission asked for.
Yep.
I think that one was agreed on, Michael.
Hmm.
That one was agreed on. Okay.
Anything else in there?
Now, those two words, planning and explicit, we can leave out on, under the collaborative and engaged.
Okay. And does anyone else have anything in this introduction? Before we move on to other people's comments, just because this is what we're focused on right now.
The quick, are we going to use that logo though somehow because it's.
Yes.
It's really good.
I'm going to put that in my.
Make sure that this page could be pulled out as its own one pager.
Sorry. As we talked about back in the fall, in, in our view, there's really two or three pages, the entire plan that people may use. They'll use the future land use map. They'll use this page. And if those two can go side by side and be on presentations and things, that's functionally how it's really going to work for 95% of the users in the next eight years. So yes, we will make sure it looks good, has a logo on it. And I'm really glad, Michael, that you liked the, the logo. That's the like most graphic design thing I've ever done in my life. So I appreciate.
You've got another job now.
Didn't you? So good.
Duncan, you had something?
I, I did. This, this one, it, it's really just, I think we sometimes get wrapped up in our ecosystem here. Under land use, balance, high scale mixed use, high scale mixed use, what?
Where are we? It's on page four.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's a, it's just one of the descriptions.
Okay.
Bullets.
Yeah. You, you list the, was it six, six land use types? All of them either have residential or commercial or conservation, except for balance, high scale mixed use. We, we know what that means, but the average person reading that would have no idea what balance, it, it just put residential and commercial in there. Just to clarify that.
Yeah, that's fair. I've heard that comment that people don't understand what the word mixed use means.
Yeah.
Do they mean like a bank and a convenience store? Or do they mean, yeah?
Yeah.
Mixed residential commercial.
Like that? Does that help? Like that? Does that help?
Sorry, I can't see it. You're giving me the one slot. No, no, I tried, no, I didn't have my glasses. I can see now.
I had.
Should it start with the word balance, like, like the other ones are.
So the.
You're suggesting, getting rid of the word balance?
I just wanted to put residential commercial in there because if you just, we know what that means, but the average.
Instead of mixed use.
Yeah, they wouldn't know what mixed use was.
Okay.
That that was my only concern.
Does balance just mean equal amounts of both?
Actually, you don't need balance if you've got mixed use in there already.
Well, it's it's, the intention is that the others, others are either are principally something. And the and that the high scale mixed use is somewhere in the balanced range. It's it's not, it's not predominantly one or the other and but block by block, it could definitely be, you know.
Word balance in there, I just wanted to put residential commercial.
Are you leaving the the word use, the use crossed out?
Use is crossed out.
Not mixed use residential? Mixed residential and commercial.
Yep.
Okay.
Should it start with the words mixed residential? I'm just looking at the other ones, like the other ones used say, say the thing first. And then it talks about the scale and this one talks about the scale and then it talks about the use.
So balanced, mixed residential and commercial, colon, high scale?
Well, I guess I'm just wondering if you need the balance, like, like if the whole point is to say what type it is first.
The balanced is.
Oops, sorry, the balanced is um in there as a counterpoint to the word principally in the others. So it is the first word in the others as well.
Will anybody know what that means actually if, because it, what, if somebody reads. High scale, mixed residential and commercial, as opposed to balanced, high scale, mixed residential and commercial. We might know what the difference is, but I don't think the average reader will.
Wouldn't the word mixed just. Be instead of balance, like instead of principally, it's mixed.
Yeah, I think mixed, mixed high.
I think balance is fine, it explains what it's meant to be, it's a balance of commercial and residential. High scale, I I I have more of a problem with high scale.
So high scale was included um to, because the other, because the principally residential in particular. Now include of a vision of having some commercial mixed in. There's nothing anymore that is intended to be completely and solely wall to wall residential. That. Everything is sort of mixed use to an, to an extent, so the high scale is is noting that it's it's. It's denser, it's larger buildings, um, it's it's more urban looking. Um, so that's why it was put in there to to make that clarification, instead of it being all kind of rural mixed use. Which you you can also have.
I think those two bullets, the one, the one we're talking about and the one below could be combined into one. Uh, I mean, residential could be a supporting use.
I'm happy, I'm I'm happy to keep them separate. I just, I just feel like I should say like. Balanced, mixed residential and commercial, colon, higher scale, like.
Right.
Like instead of having the word high scale come first.
Why don't we ask for the commissioners to, to to uh. Express an opinion of whether we should keep it balanced or not. Otherwise, we're gonna be talking here for a long time.
I just want to add the word residential and commercial.
Are people fine with Duncan's suggestion, just the way it's written?
I think it'd be better to have mixed and balanced residential commercial.
So high scale, mixed and bal. Shit.
For some reason, for high scale.
I think she was saying because of the intensity of it. I I was just trying to make it so some, the average person reading it would have an idea of what it was.
I mean, the other thing to to remember is that there's these, and 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 yes, we we can't really assume that everybody's going to read the whole thing, absolutely. But there are pretty extensive descriptions of each of these in the land use section, so it's not like this is the only time these.
No, no, I know, I I was just saying it, because again, who's gonna get the on page?
Right.
Five.
Right. Um, the other thing that Paul just pointed out, oh, yeah.
Well, I think Paul Engels was still making a suggestion.
Without the high scale, high scale, mixed and balanced residential and commercial. Well, I think they want to.
So. So the, there is a difference in our heads, in my head at least, between, so principally residential, low scale. Would allow some mixed, there'll be some commercial that would be allowed, the zoning changes would have to occur. But the intention would be that you could have sort of a neighborhood store or whatever, so technically it is a mixed commercial and residential space. The same with the commercial with supporting uses, the way that's intended is it is. It is commercial and and principally so, and maybe I can put the word principally, but then it all says principally, so I don't know if it loses its meaning at that point. But then with supporting uses being some of the things, some of the requests that we've gotten recently about exploring what businesses could do. About housing for temporary workers or, you know, things like that, or small cafes or a gym that serves local, you know, employees, things like. Things like that, where the balanced, high scale, mixed use really, the intention is, is really to be somewhere in the realm of of fifty fifty. Where you have housing and you have commercial uses, it's not, you know, the impression is not that it's predominantly one or the other. Um, and then high scale is what I've said, it's it's about intensity and density and size and um building bulk and all of these things. That it will, it would look different than the low scale areas like. You gotta be clear about what you're kidding about, I don't know.
Articulates it most clearly is. I also wonder if, has an attorney look at this yet?
Could you use that so that Sue can hear what you're saying?
One more button.
Oh, push it again.
Okay, um, has an attorney or will an attorney look at this? Because in all of these decisions, we are fraught with being sued basically for whatever we write. And I just wonder whether.
The city attorney has not looked at it. There will always be the potential of being sued because this is a a by design, a broad scope document. It doesn't say you must have five things, you know, you must, you must fit in this percentage. It doesn't have those things because that's not what this document is for, so there is always interpretation that will happen. And people will interpret it the way that they choose to, and there will always be that percentage of person who's interpreting it a different way. Than the the remaining, you know, there'll be the one percent always. Um, so there's no way for it to write this document that completely boxes out the um potential for being sued. That said, it would be, it it would be a rarity to be sued on this document alone. It would be on how it is implemented, so how on programs, on regulations, on other things that the city is doing. It wouldn't necessarily be on the contents of the document.
On the land development regulations that proceed from this.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think that's going to be a problem. I think this document has, we've we've avoided ambiguity uh very well in this document compared to the old one. Uh, so I I think there's very little ambiguity here.
Fine, Fran, did you wanna?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, if we said balanced residential and commercial high scale. Left out the word mixed in use.
No, I think you want to keep mixed use in there or mixed.
What if we just put the words high scale at the end, which is maybe what you're.
That's what I'm trying to do, put the word high scale at the end.
That seems.
And then is everybody happy? Yes.
Balanced makes.
I'll just email the change to.
I'm doing email changes directly. Okay, good, perfect. Good suggestions. Anything else on the intro?
Yeah, could we scroll up to the top page three for a second? Please.
You asked nicely.
Thank you. And the sentence, our natural resources are growing in their resiliency. I don't think is accurate, and I think we talked about this before and I thought we decided to get rid of that. Because our natural resources are struggling to stay resilient, they're not growing in their resiliency right now.
So tho- those were words that I wrote and I'm happy to change them. I was trying to describe in this couple of paragraphs. The efforts that the city is undertaking as um having identified the threats at the beginning. The city is proud to be on a positive track of addressing subjects. And so I'm more than happy to find some different way to write it. I was trying to say, how do we say that? We're not starting at zero today. The city did a lot of things in the last five years.
City is working hard to uh. Support the resiliency of our natural resources or something like that. I mean, our climate action plan says it all, you don't have to say it here.
Right, but you asked us to say it here. You wanted, you wanted a statement of an introduction of what's, this is trying to capture the plan in a couple of pages.
I, I think Laurie's sentence was well said.
I think so.
Our city is working to support our natural resources growing in their resiliency. Because I think, I think that's a true statement.
Yeah.
So that was just a, a small one. I had a small one in the next paragraph.
Okay.
Which is we're trending slightly younger owed to growth in our aged twenty to thirty five population. I think we can write that, that'll be more clearly understood, that we are trending slightly younger owing to the growth of our. Twenty to twenty five, twenty to thirty five year old population.
Okay, it seems.
Because aged, yeah. Or you put population aged twenty to twenty to thirty five. It's just that group, that cohort, if you like. Down under how to use this plane, plan, we talk about the city's vision statement. And it seems like it should be reworded to match what we're putting on the front.
The city's guiding.
The city's guiding principles.
And and Fran, speak up, I know you had had um various comments throughout too, if you're. If there's, if we're getting to some of them.
Laurie just covered one of them.
Okay, Laurie stole one.
Sorry, Fran.
And we're probably not going to go through a hundred pages, sentence by sentence, but this is something that we had kind of done a lot of work on last week. And hadn't seen the results yet. Anything else on the introduction? And this goes through um, you know.
Quickly on the topic section. It says the plan includes nine topic focused sections, but we've got ten of them highlighted.
It's because I wrote that one last.
So that might want to change to ten.
All right.
Picky.
Just picky with your accuracy.
Just picky. Did we use vision statement in the end?
Guiding principles.
Well, then down here, we use vision statement, the four values expressed in this vision statement, so.
I'm working through it.
Oh, we already.
We're doing, we're doing find and replace.
Yeah.
Yeah, she um got that one, I think.
What page is that? Four topic sections, I'm I'm only on page three and I've got one more quick one at the.
Michael, you gotta speed up. You said what page?
He's on the top of page five.
Page five, just above stakeholder participation. There it says, um, it seems to me that where you talk about the five broadly defined planning areas. I would either put parentheses and list them or put see page seventy one, because reading it, most people don't know what that's talking about.
Yep.
Took me a while to figure out what it was talking about.
Okay, so we got to page five.
I'm sorry, but I'm still on page three.
Didn't you have them all written up already?
The question I just asked about the use of the term. Vision statement referring to the four values that we've got as our guiding principles. We're either gonna call them guiding principles or or visions.
Right, I haven't.
We changed, we're changing to guiding principles.
You did.
Anywhere it says business statement is going to go.
I didn't hear that.
Oh, somebody, somebody brought it up.
And I will also do a find and replace after this meeting, just to make sure I haven't missed anything like that.
How done do we get to housing?
Okay, did we make it all the way through um the whole intro?
No. I'm I'm going back to something that I missed before, which is uh purely um. Something I pointed out before, the use of the word palette, you've got palette as in my palette that I taste with instead of palette. On page two, third paragraph.
That, is that a, um, that feels like a typo kind of a question.
Right, it says, uh, our natural resources are growing in their resiliency and the city has applied a palette of tools. That should be P A L E T T E.
That was Paul.
Probably spelled that way too.
I heard that.
Yeah, I would. I did not know that there were two different styles.
Well, one is, you know, you know what I mean, you can, you can't eat them both.
You could try.
And I'd also made a comment there about strengthening uh connectivity. And I feel quite strongly about this, between human and natural environments. You know, getting people closer to to wild animals is not a good idea. It's led to, led us into some terrible situations, they're called zoonotic diseases. And we're seeing more of them, I just read recently that mosquitoes, Anopheles mosquitoes are moving north. And now there's malaria in Florida. So that's probably not a good idea.
I um, I think that the, my use of the word connectivity is probably a poor word choice. I think that the word that I was trying to encapsulate encapsulate is the. The under, the 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 ability for our residents to feel that the natural environment is a part of our community. That um it is not, we didn't put up some big giant wall and say, oh, that must be somewhere else that we are incorporating. Wildlife habitat into our community, that that is a um, that that is a strength of our community that we're proud of. That's what I was trying to say, connectivity in terms of not necessarily physical, but but mental. So if you've got a better word.
I had uh added, uh, continue to strengthen uh coexistence. Um, between the human and natural environments in mostly separate parts of the landscape. We need to coexist with the natural world, but we don't need to be right on top of them.
I was even just gonna suggest, I was gonna suggest the word balance instead of connectivity, just a balance between human and natural environments.
There you go.
Yeah, that's a good. Okay.
Sorry, do we take out strengthen or is it, these efforts will continue to balance between? To strength, strengthen the balance. Okay.
To balance, yeah.
I think symbiosis.
Okay, so we're somehow, we're back on page three.
Symbiosis.
That means something. That means something completely different.
Speed ahead, Michael. Try to speed ahead. We're trying to get through the.
Well, you know, you.
What else you got? Next.
I had a lot of things, but you know, if they weren't uh commented upon, then I have to I'll go fast, but uh
Good.
In further down in that, on that same page.
Page three.
Page two.
Page two.
Last penultimate paragraph, I had added in this that sentence that this plan embraces science-based targets laid out in the city's first ever um climate action plan adopted and sets clear far-reaching goals on climate mitigation and adaptation me- measures for housing, for the movement of people, for equity, so for, for goals on climate change mitigation and and adaptation measures I've added. And then it's also for housing, for the movement of people, for equity, for our natural environment, all the rest of it. But I think we need to have something about climate change mitigation in there. Right there. I think you've got this
So add.
Somewhere. Page two.
Just added it.
Climate change mitigation. Yeah.
If you, if you. My thing, you'll see it.
Put it in.
It's in.
Next. You need to add the word, um, uh oh, okay. It's fine. So where are we?
Um, we're, we're trying to finish the introduction, the whole, the whole section.
So what page are we on?
Well, I think everyone else said all their things on the introduction, so it's whichever ones you had comments on that we didn't get to yet.
I had something on the next page which relates to actions uh and inventory analysis and challenges. The goals are the benchmarks that we will measure, we will use to measure progress over time. Uh, but the two words used too because the sentence is incomplete.
I don't.
And then in the.
I wouldn't agree to the word by, but I can put, I can make that whatever people want it to be.
We will, we'll use them to measure. Those are the benchmarks that we'll use to measure, right? Is what you're saying.
Mm-hmm. But you can also, you can measure something. You don't need to use to measure something necessarily. Whatever anyone wants to change is fine.
Those are the benchmarks that we will measure progress by over time.
Yep.
Yes, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, it's just not.
Not the King's English.
Thank you, pardon. It's just not what my English grammar teacher would have told me to do. And he was a real A H.
Well, don't be that way.
Further down, all parts, you've got all parts of this plan. I, I think all the goals of this plan are used to guide city policy because that's what they're for. If you remember correctly, all of you, I had proposed using the word policy goals because that's what they are. And it gives more weight to those goals if they are policy goals. But I'm only using the word goals here.
Okay.
If I can uh make a suggestion, Michael is right about that sentence of the one back before this. If uh, where is that? Uh okay. Are the benchmarks by which we will measure is the correct grammar?
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Give a rule.
By is a preposition which is in the wrong place. Yeah.
I, I think we should go with what Susan.
Yeah. By which.
Let's ramble on down the road.
Yeah.
All right. What else, Michael?
All, all the parts, all parts of this plan, I say all the goals of this plan.
What about the actions?
Are used. Actions aren't, don't guide city policy. The goals are the policy guidance. At least that's what I understood from Kelsey.
Ye- the goals are the policy guidance, but city uh, there is also city policy in which actions are selected to go first, second, be funded, more or less.
Boy, speak here, you know, if you don't like it, say so and I'll give it up. But it's, th- these are the goals, uh, actions or something else.
I'm fine with just saying all parts of this plan.
Yeah. Me too.
Yep. If everybody's happy, I'm delighted.
Well, I think so. Part of why I think it's nice to have it say all parts of this plan is because there are parts that aren't only the goals, like the energy. I guess I'm thinking of like the energy plan part is, you know, there's really important things in there that would guide
Yeah.
guide things, but it was more of a text session, you know, versus the succinct goal.
I just picked on the fact that it's to guide city policy. And the actions are what used to be called strategies. So they're not the same.
But plan is more inclusive.
So the actions don't guide city policy.
No, but like the maps might. I mean, I think there's a lot of stuff in the plan that isn't, that might be important to.
Okay.
I agree.
Um, but it sounds like we want to keep it the way it is.
Always looking for ways to make it simple and avoid ambiguity. Let's keep going. I have nothing else in the introduction.
Okay, great. So we are on to people and
Page four.
Population. Anything in people and population?
For me.
Not a very controversial section.
Okay. Are, I, you know, Fran's still scrolling. You've got anything? So it'd be page um ten?
I had a question on page five where the minutes were kept of the those um meetings that you had with stakeholders. That's on page five.
Does it say that there are minutes or what's your? You're just questioning for your.
I just, I just asked.
We kept um notes that we used in, in then producing the plan. There were not published minutes that included details of the discussion.
They were recorded too.
There, there, there's video recordings of everything and we took sort of internal notes that people can.
Uh, the video recordings are available at the website?
Yes.
Of those, whatever they were.
Of the community conversations.
Community conversations.
But Michael's question is the stakeholder meeting. So we met with all sorts of folks.
No.
Independently, just had meetings with various folks throughout the plan to, anybody who wanted to speak to us, we listened to them.
Right. Nope, there are not meetings or recordings of meetings. There are not minutes or recordings of some of these stakeholder meetings, correct?
Took copious notes, but that's, you know, we were, it was note taking as, you know, we met with X person and, or X entity and they gave us their thoughts and we took notes as we always would in, in all meetings that we do.
Is it something we should consider in the future or?
Those are, those are not um public meetings because it wasn't with a body like the commission. It was a meeting between staff and stakeholder groups. It's something that.
Sounds like it adds work. Just has a bearing on the content. Yeah, that's all I, why, that's the reason I asked.
Okay. Um, so I guess one thing to just generally point out is nothing is in this that we haven't seen twice and discussed as a group, so there um, like I don't.
I, I just don't know whether, what there are a few other little things, grammatical things and so on, that I don't want to waste our time on, but I'm, just make sure that you have them.
Okay, so we're on ten people and population. And I think as Donna said, this wasn't a really controversial section, so um we can move on to housing. I think I saw some people had some things in the housing section.
Tiny, tiny thing on page fifteen.
One, one quite important one on page seven, which is the use of ndakina. Which we shouldn't use because ndakina doesn't apply to people, it applies to territory on the history paragraph. Were you?
I don't know.
In the introduction.
Right here.
What, what section are you in?
I'm on, under the history section.
Page eight, he's still in the introduction.
Oh, okay. I see what you're saying.
Um.
Just deleted it.
Oh, say again what the word is, just so we. Oh, she, Kelsey found it.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and I've checked it with chief Don Stevens, who happened to be at a meeting that I attended.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so um.
I had a very quick thing on the top of page fifteen.
Okay.
Uh, the first bullet point talks about explore and implement non-regulatory programs. And it goes on to say use of municipally owned lands. And um
I think it's a big omission.
I just wanted to know to what that's referring or if there's a way to to uh identify what's being talked about there.
So um specifically, the, the land we were talking about is the um, and Paul can correct me if I'm, if I'm being too narrow about this, the former city hall property. There is some additional land behind the buildings that is um contiguous to the Champlain Housing Trust buildings, um that there's a possibility of being able to use that back half of the back part of the property for housing um and still remain the front half being rented to the school district. Um, and, and maintaining the, the buildings in the front, but there's additional space in the back that would logically be, logically could be included in the housing that is next door.
And to, to elaborate on that, Lori, the Affordable Housing Committee has explored the possibility of the city um looking to invest in the acquisition of land whose purpose would be to hold and then for some future generation to make it available for housing to land bank um for the purpose of housing. So the city has in the past and continues to acquire land for conservation purposes. What if it also saw opportunities to acquire a piece of land for housing? Um, I, I suspect that maybe what you're getting at there is maybe drawing a distinction between those purposes.
Or just highlighting, when it says use of multiple municipally owned lands, that just raises a question for me. If it says land on the old uh city hall or city property and any lands that we may purchase for that use, something that it gives an expla- explanations that when I read that, I know what it means.
Okay.
Would be, would be useful. Does that make sense to anybody else?
Are you, I guess just as a question, are you concerned that it's too broad and maybe um like you don't want to see certain types of municipally owned land used for housing or like I guess I'm just, I want to make sure I understand.
I just, when I read it, I was going, what is this referring to? Um, is it referring to the land we're sitting on? I mean, what is it? And if it's something that's real, let's identify it so we know what we're talking about.
Yeah, I guess when I saw it, um, you know, it's just, it's been a ti- a type of um like strategy for housing that's come up like over different conversations with the housing committee and, you know, different, you know, they've used examples of like other municipalities across the country have different programs of some. So I guess I saw it here as maybe more generic, like to come up with any one of these potential kind of broad range programs. Um, you know, rather than say, you know, I think Kelsey gave you like a very specific example of a specific piece of land.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't know, it's a good question.
It just, I read it and I was like, what are we talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I kind of had the same. It, it struck me as, is this wording, the use of municipal owned lands, is that putting us in a position? What I've written was uh, if, if we have a goal of a thousand units of affordable housing by twenty thirty-five, but we're not reaching that. Is this putting us in a position of having to take some parkland to meet the goal? So I didn't know if we should, it should be some kind of a distinguishing, you know, what's already established as parkland or natural resource land.
Yeah, okay. Well, it seems like especially with two people feeling like it's maybe not worded super well, maybe we.
Maybe there's something along the lines of acquisition of or use of um appropriate or, or municipally owned lands in, in, in you know, an area is appropriate for development or something like that.
Especially designated, perhaps.
What about non-park?
Specially designated lands.
Could it say like, or municipally in.
Housing designated.
Municipal investment in land? You know, so like some way to get away from the idea that maybe one of our existing parks might go to be one of these areas.
Right.
But still open the door for.
That is the one, one of the ambiguities that I find in here. And I'd made a co- a comment that is it, is that a viable action? Because municipally owned land, owned lands are publicly owned lands essentially.
It's a very, it's, it's a not uncommon tool for municipalities to invest in land for the purpose of housing. I mean, that's a big chunk of Winuski's redevelopment was a strategy that involved that. So the city could either use land that exists, let's say, next to the old city hall or be an investor um to hold.
Require public consent to use.
Oh, I mean, it always.
That's my question.
Depends on how it's purchased.
Right.
So if it's purchased with the conservation fund, that's a whole different thing. But if it's purchased with a fund specifically to be um used for another purpose, then that, then that is.
But it's all taxpayer funds. Unless you get a grant to buy it from somewhere else.
Well, conservation funds are specific.
Right, so we're not talking about the conservation piece here.
I'm, I'm just wondering whether this is, is, is a um, a, could be a problem.
It's a pretty commonly used tool.
I didn't mean, mean to bring up a long controversial conversation. I was just hoping to, and maybe leaving it ambiguous is fine because there's a whole process that has to go through to approve use of any land anyway. Um, I just thought that if it was identified as, you know, existing municipal owned or per.
What about use of, what is? I mean, it's adding more hyphenated adjectives, which is not ideal, but use of municipally owned non-conservation land?
Yeah, no, uh, yeah, let's, I think you just stay the way it is. Leave it, leave it the way it is. I just it just worried me.
Although I might suggest use or acquisition of.
Yes.
Cause it, it's not just what we have. I know that's an add-on, but.
I think our acquisition is good. I, I had one comment.
Lord, or yeah, go ahead.
Before that, under the goals. I, I thought there were two goals that appeared to me as not achievable.
Yep.
Increasing the vacancy rate to five percent. Uh, and then the other is reduced by half the percentage of households who spend more than fifty percent of their income on housing. I didn't see where the city could impact those. Even where city actions could impact those, where they're, they're kind of dependent on, you know, the real estate market and interest rates and that. So I, that was just a question, I guess.
I think from our perspective, you know, many, many of the goals in here can only be achieved with partners. The city's role might be to say, how do we streamline to make it easy for in the core of city center, along Shelburne Road to make, create the opportunities for housing to exist. So um similar to weatherize six hundred homes, we're not doing the weatherization. However, we have a number of tools at our disposal to facilitate it. So it's you know, ma- maybe there'd need, there could be something at the beginning of the plan that broadly states that, you know, we have a role to play, but we're not the only entity to achieve frankly, all of these goals. It's going to take us and our partners, just as we say, um, um collaborative and.
Could take collabora- collaboration across all.
Right. There's almost nothing that we can do ourselves without others, but.
No, the, the real question is, do you have any control over some of those?
No, the, the real question is, do you have any control over some of those things? Like in income. You know, the reduced by half the percentage of households who spend more than fifty percent. It's like you have no control over people's income.
No, but we do have control over whether we apply for grants to support more Champlain Housing Trust. Um, construction in our city. And each one of those that gets built reduces the proportion of our population spending an exorbitant amount of on housing.
So you just hope that AI doesn't take over everybody's jobs and all of a sudden, everybody's making half as much money.
Could we say that we, we could try to, we should use the tools available to increase.
I've been hearing too much about this lately.
Okay, um. Hey. So I guess Fran's ca- questions were first. Does the answer that it would be through partnerships, does that answer your question? Okay, and then, um, Donna, did we address your question about the one that you thought wasn't achievable?
No, I don't think we need to.
Okay.
I don't need, I, no change, no change there. Um, I did have a comment on the, the last line of the first paragraph under housing. I'm not sure attracts twenty somethings? Like, do we have to call them twenty somethings? Because people seem to be really young at thirty-five these days. You know, maybe just attracts younger people and families.
Where is it?
Adults and seniors, you know, or just something, I, I don't know, just something a little more generic.
Twenty something, can we repeat?
Yeah, the twenties, the twenty somethings, and I'm like, twenty somethings, really? This, do, do people still say that?
Can we say the young adults?
Young adults.
Yeah, twenty somethings are big.
Somethings.
We're just, we're just.
People like the twenty somethings.
I have no problem with.
Really care, but it just seemed like it was kind of, it was kind of exclusive, you know, it was picking out these certain categories. Multi-generational families, seniors and twenty somethings. And I'm like, what?
To name a few. It wasn't in the, in the.
Just seemed odd.
Twenty-three draft.
It, it just seemed like an odd, an odd list to me.
Maybe we can just say young adults.
Yeah, yeah, young, young adults and families, but you know.
Upstarts.
Well, and then include regular adults too, you know. The multi-generational families, I hadn't. Idea where the multi-generational families part came from.
Yeah, we're not trying to attract the regular adults.
Regular adults too.
It is true, I think.
Oh, it's just that whole sentence, just, just somebody rewrite it and it'll be fine, you know, it's just.
I, I think young attracts young people and young families, something like that.
Yeah, and just something a little, little more generic. Um, I wanted to make a point too, um, that. At its best, the clean heat standard won't exist until twenty twenty-six. Um, so. Be careful about relying on it to do anything in twenty twenty-four. It won't happen. But you have other modes. I think the airport properties and stuff, perhaps. Perhaps something can happen sooner on those.
You're talking about the weatherization and electrification? Yeah, I mean, these are, um, the goals. That were established through the Climate Action Plan, as, as you know, said, let's go with the science, not let's self-limit. And so. In developing the other goals, we tried to take that same approach. So let's not self-limit on the goal of affordable housing or vacancy rates. Let's set the goal that really should be the goal. There is a high likelihood that we won't hit every single goal to the maximum, but let's not self-limit on the goals.
Fair enough.
Um, that's, that was sort of the approach that we took.
Way then, cause I was like reading it today and thinking, oh my gosh, we'll never make this, you know.
Well, and so we took the inspiration from the climate group of, let's say, let's go with the science. We may not hit it, but let's not say only do what we think we can do of fifty homes, cause then if we hit fifty homes, then. Well, great, we consider our laurels, and I don't think that's what the climate group wanted to do. So we took the same approach to all the other topics of. Let's strive to be the.
It's a goal, it's not a, it's not an action.
Yeah, housing actions.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on housing? Uh, Fran?
We talk about on page sixteen, uh, ten-year affordable housing target. And we have by third line there, by twenty thirty-two of a thousand new affordable housing units. And, and what I was trying to do is find out what percentage of housing units is that? And the only thing I really had to go on, cause I don't know what we're building this year, was to go back to what we say down below. That we, since nineteen eighty, South Burlington has averaged adding approximately. Hundred and forty-five dwelling units per year. So if you use that, uh, over the eight years. Um. Uh, you end up only building, uh, eleven hundred and sixty new units. And if a thousand of those are affordable, it's. It's a real high percentage, so I didn't know how to do that.
Yeah, um, we had that same, I recalled that same debate that the commission had back in twenty sixteen, cause it was a similar number. Um, we put this one in because A, we didn't wanna set a lower goal for ourselves than in twenty sixteen. Um, B, it is, there is a slight differentiation in that the. Um, permanently affordable, the, the affordable homes don't necessarily have to be new homes. So for example, Dorset Commons, uh, near city hall. Was existing housing that was purchased in the last few years by Champlain Housing Trust to become permanently affordable. And so a hundred dwelling units that existed already. That were naturally affordable in some ways became permanently affordable. So there may be some creative. Pieces, but I would a hundred percent agree with you that that is a massively ambitious target. Right, to say, uh, cause we, we're not going to be able to say from the market rate side, that ninety percent of all new housing is gonna be affordable. That's not. Achievable in that, in that realm. Um. So, but we, we didn't wanna, we didn't wanna write a lower number to set a lower target than last time, because that felt. Counter to the goal, but I think, you know, if, if there's something that you. Feel that should be discussed in the analysis section of understanding that this is a. Um, this is a big stretch and may require thinking about how do we convert existing housing stock, et cetera, et cetera.
I don't know, I th- I thought maybe, um. Uh, we're, we're adding more than, I mean, the, the recent building. The re- we're adding more than a hundred and forty-five units, uh, uh, dwelling units per year at, at a, a current time.
We are, we try to look at it over, over cycles though, and I think. Our history in South Burlington is that there's a pretty, you know, right now, we're in a big push a lot with city center. I suspect, though I do not have a crystal ball, that in four years' time, we're gonna be under our average for a couple of years. Um, it's just the, the nature of cycles, so I don't wanna assume that we're always at this two hundred that we got. You know, this year. Um.
Yeah, maybe just say it's, it's a stretch goal or something like that. Some, I don't know, the phrasing, yeah. But I'm, I'm okay with it the way.
Ambitious, ambitious target. Plan includes an ambitious target of establishing by twenty thirty thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we could describe it slightly as newly or an. A thousand additional, well, we have to think about the word new, cause.
It was the word, it's, the word used was establishment instead of construction.
Right.
Which is a bit of splitting hairs.
Yeah.
But.
Right, it does allow for.
It allows for, for hu- units to become permanently affordable or affordable without having to be built from scratch.
New or transformed.
Yep.
But, yeah. Next.
I have a, um, one of the housing actions, the last one. Um, it's actually a pretty controversial thing. Um, and consider applying life safety codes to single-family homes. If you don't have a way to enforce that, don't put that in there.
Well, it's consider, right?
That's why it's considered.
It's consider, but is that even a good idea?
That's why we.
Where do we look at it? As if we have a building inspector.
I, I mean, you know, cause you're also, you're saying life safety code, you're not saying energy codes, you're saying life safety. And I'm like, wow, that's a big step. Because the whole state does not have a life safety code for residential. So you're doing something that the entire state does not have.
I think what I meant when I, we use those words was building codes.
That's what, yeah, Vermont State does not have.
Correct. Certain cities do, we do not.
Multi-family.
No.
No, no.
Single family homes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And they've.
What's it like door, uh, that has to do with stairs and.
Doors, stairs, fireproofing, all of it, right across the board, ADA.
Windows.
And then they staff.
Window sizes.
Yep, yep.
So you have to do that, yeah. You, if you have the staff, I just didn't think they did it for, other than rental housing.
Isn't the city still talking about?
For, for rental housing, I can understand it. I just, for the single family.
So those, it's a. Those would be the connected piece of it.
Would be in conjunction with having a building inspector, which the city is considering.
For rental.
For all property.
I thought it was just.
Well, so in twenty twenty-three, the city council is looking at establishing a rental registry.
Right.
Um, and, uh, short-term rental and the associated staffing to do that. The, the statement here is, this is an eight-year plan, so over that period of time, consider. Are we reaching a point where we want to think about that? Um. It may, may or may not come around, but if it's not in the plan, it becomes harder to. Take action on i- in the next decade.
Also, as a homeowner, I would say, please don't do this. Because you're just gonna make a huge expense for a lot of people that isn't gonna really do that much for in a single-family house. Single-family homes are pretty, they're pretty safe normally. You know, it's the multi-family that really, you know, you get into real dangers.
As a builder, I could debate that, but, um.
Yeah.
As we're trying to get the energy climate action plan implemented and. Have people building homes that are properly insulated and properly.
No, I agree with that part of it.
To have inspectors in order to do that, and if you have the inspectors. Then it makes sense to incorporate basic. Uh, building codes so that people aren't building unsafe houses.
Basic things.
Basic things, yeah.
Basic things, yeah, it's just, in my, in my experience, the, the fire marshals, you know, tend to focus on the building. Code issues, um, at the exclusion of the energy code issues. And so, you know, it would be nice if we had an energy code that was enforced, and then you can introduce the. The other pieces of it, but anyway.
Well, so, so, I guess.
I'm not. I, I just was sort of putting that out there as a homeowner, that I would, I would feel rather. An objection to somebody coming into my house and saying, oh, you need to take out this door and put bigger doors in. You need to have ramps here and everything. It's like, that should be my choice, is whether I wanna do that.
So it, it, how it works, uh, just experienced in Burlington is that it's not, that nobody's coming into your house to tell you to change things. It is if you are changing something, it then has to comply. So if you're replacing a window, it has to then be a casement window in certain situations and not a sashed window.
I know, I know how it works.
But, yeah, okay.
Sometimes they ask for things that are really, really expensive to do.
Sure.
And it does, and for limited benefit.
I guess my, the bigger point is that in this plan, um, we included the word consider, and we included it as. Separate from these other ordinances that are, um. Have been, have moved forward more in discussion of policy, so it's, it's listed as a separate thing as a possible consider. Um, that would be the.
Well, and it doesn't really mention the energy code anywhere in here.
Um, wouldn't it be the bullet above the one we were just talking about? I know it doesn't say energy code, but.
I guess I could generic that.
I get, that's how I kinda saw that one.
And you, and I was gonna suggest, instead of saying incentivize energy efficiency upgrades, say, and utilize. Incentives for energy efficiency upgrades, because. South Burlington's not gonna incentivize anything, we're gonna use existing incentive programs. Right? Unless you, unless you can, if you can, then leave it that way.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, a very small example would be no permit fees required for energy efficiency upgrades. For example, that would be a, it's not necessary, that's an incentive that we could do.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so we're.
To reduce taxes possibly.
Oh, and by the way, I'm not against, I'm not against building codes for new construction. You know, that's, that's fine, it's, it's for existing homes. I think you really wanna be careful. Anyway, I spoke.
Anything?
I'm done.
Okay, anything else in housing? And this could be anywhere up through page nineteen.
Oh. Um, on eighteen, we're back to codes. Um, second, end of second paragraph under rental market. Um.
Page you want?
Eighteen. And maybe this is the same issue again, uh, the application of residential. Building codes to the construction of single-family homes as well, so it's the same issue. No, that, that was okay, but then the next sentence. The existing of such codes can decrease insurance premiums, increase fire safety and standardization. Of necessary firefighting equipment and provide more assurance to purchasers, and I agree that that all. That all does that for multi-family, but I didn't think it had much effect on single-family.
I think that sentence might apply to the whole rest of the paragraph.
And not the single family?
Cause I think it also.
Okay.
To like the first sentence with the rental and multi-family, just that.
Okay, yeah, yeah, cause it, it just followed the word single-family homes, you know, and. But no, I agree that it definitely, definitely does those things for multi.
Okay, so it sounds like.
I had a question about the rental mo- um, the rental registry. Is that, are we exploring it or is it going to happen?
I think I would expect that by the time this plan gets to the city council, we will have an answer on that question.
So should we then consider changing exploring to the city will, will establish?
Um, we have a to-do note that, um. I would say even more likely by the time you hold your public hearing, we will know the answer to that question.
Hmm, yeah, so there's some, some cleanup things that just with the passage of time and the parallel processes, we'll have to double check when we get to that point.
So do you wanna put a flag here just to? Does it remind you got one? Okay. That's a, that's a busy brain.
Also, fun fact for you all, this section on, uh, short-term rentals is now a, um, required element of a comprehensive plan as of twenty twenty-four. So under state law.
Really?
Addressing short-term rentals is now a required element of a comprehensive plan, so we're on it and ahead of it.
Hmm, steel trap.
Okay.
So much for traveling, and Airbnb.
We have hotels.
It's too expensive. If you stayed in a hotel in Burlington area recently, it's like you couldn't afford to come here.
Um, okay, I, I think we're at the end of housing, um, so economy, starting on page twenty.
I just, I had two things. Uh, where we say increase local business and increase business growth, I thought we should say support. Uh, support and increase.
In, in the bullet?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Uh, down towards the bottom.
Which one is it?
Uh, under economy goals.
Yeah.
The sixth and seventh one, say, increase local business ownership and increase business growth. I, I would. I don't know, my thought is rephrase it and say support and increase. We're, we're not gonna actually do something that increases it.
Right, but the goals are not necessarily things that the city is, the city does. A supporting them is an action. Having an increase, an increase existing is the goal. I also have a rogue semicolon, here we go. Okay.
Hey, is that okay then? You're, you're saying that you don't. Okay, here, go ahead.
So the last one, is that two bullets? At the word electrify?
Hmm. Oh. Where?
Uh, the last one, we say increase total chi- childcare and total slots, and then all of a sudden we say electrify.
Yes.
That's two bullets.
Yep.
Good catch. Okay, anything else in economy?
Yes.
Okay.
Under the inventory analysis and challenges. Says we are growing city both in population and economy and supporting intentional and sustainable economic growth. Must be a priority of um, in our efforts to be, and I added, climate resilient, to be um. Climate resilient and community focused, community focused rather than human. Cause I think before, when I asked this. When I asked the opposite question, you said, no, it should be the community because it encompasses everyone.
Like that?
And then I have a more fundamental problem with that, in that. Um, intentional growth is gonna kill us. But I don't know if we could do anything about it in this plan, but I think we all should acknowledge that. Growth is not sustainable.
Well, are you gonna like reduce population then? Cause as long as, as long as population increases, growth is inevitable.
Um, yes, and some areas of the world population is decreasing. Um, we just need to be careful that we are not. Overreaching the carrying capacity of our community.
So in other parts of the plan, we've replaced the word growth with vibrancy. Economic growth becomes economic vibrancy.
That's good. Do you wanna use it here too?
That's what I'm asking, like that.
I would like to keep growth.
All right.
I've, I'm wondering about the word intentional. So so Michael, the word intentional, the way I see the word intentional in this sentence, and maybe I'm wrong. Is that it um, it means like focused and like thoughtful and like we're being careful about our growth. We're not just rampantly growing, so I see the word intentional as being like a, like almost like a qualifier. To say it's not just willy-nilly, it's.
Maybe we should use cautious then.
I I think I think Jessica described it incredibly well. It's intentional because it's looked at through the lens of not just economic growth, but also climate change too.
Yeah.
The two do not have to be.
There is healthy, there's such a thing as healthy growth.
Hey, anything else?
Well, I added those in that in our efforts to be climate resilient and community focused.
We got that.
Been added. You got it, okay.
Done deal.
Okay, are we ready to move on to energy, which would start on page twenty-five?
And line one, I have a comment.
Okay.
And I think we've left out, um, on the second sentence, it should say we must incorporate greenhouse gas reduction comma. That's added mitigation and adapt adaptation measures as top priorities. Cause we left that out in other places and we have to make sure that's in there.
Okay, looks like it's added.
I had a proposal before we get into it, that the end, we should put the energy section. Uh, at the beginning, followed by environment, housing, transportation, economy. And the remaining sections, because energy is such a crucial part of the plan. So it's far down in the in the document, I think it should be further up.
Yeah.
I would agree with their reorganization.
We hadn't really talked about the order of the plan. Was there, was this just order of?
There's a, there's a rough um. Clustering of sections, like I, like community services and water and utilities are together, community history and culture, recreation are together. That lead sort of into community services, so there's some of that clustering, but the order that those clusters are in doesn't, doesn't make any difference. Um, in, nothing, nothing in the order of the clusters was was purposeful um. In how I did it, just just how they, like in energy and environment and transportation, I think. Um, are kind of a cluster, economy, housing and people, well, people I think should be high, cause it's a, it's a foundational thing. Um, it's almost, it almost rises to the level of being in the introduction, so that's why I put it first. Um, but if you wanted to move energy, environment, transportation all up, and then housing, economy, and then the others.
Yeah, I go for that, yeah.
And then the only other one I'd say is land use should either be first or last, because it is the summary of everything altogether.
I think that's great at the last. Cause it's really what this is all leading to.
And then you have the mapping, the maps and stuff too, it leads into that.
This is in Zeta, I had nothing until.
Okay, oh, the love, under energy goals, the fourth bullet point. Um, do you really wanna say require new homes to be carbon-free, to reduce emissions, because that's next to impossible to do? Um, I don't mean, and see, if you say require homes to have greenhouse gas-free heating. And cooking systems, no, decarbonize is a problem, because there's so many building materials.
Is this under, is this under the goals?
Goals, I think my.
Energy goals on twenty-five?
Well, carbon-free.
Why, where does it say?
You know, it's, yeah. Yeah, I mean, no, you don't want it to be carbon-free, you want it to be carbon-intensive in it, in its storage capacity, so.
Require new homes to be carbon-free to reduce emissions by four percent.
Yeah, if you actually just said, if you just say require new homes to have greenhouse gas-free heating and cooking.
Plan and.
Heating and appliances. Something like, then it's.
So it's um, that, the goals from the energy section are primarily pulled directly from the climate action plan, and Paul is just pulling that up to see what.
What it's.
If that phrasing, if that phrasing is lifted directly from the climate action plan.
You don't want buildings to be carbon-free, you want them to be carbon-storing.
That's, 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 this is supposed to be relating to heating and cooling.
I thought it was, so I think that we should just make.
Cooling, lighting, it's it's related to utilities.
Yeah, re- require new homes to have greenhouse gas-free heating and appliances.
Heating, cooling and electric.
So we're, I I think that that probably reflects the intent, the specific statement from the climate action plan is new homes and businesses to be carbon-free. To reduce emissions by four percent. I suspect that that is a little bit of shorthand, honestly.
Yeah, but it's very, it's actually incorrect.
Right, but I'm, I I I understand, but it was a planning document that was probably trying to capture the sense. As opposed to saying, oh, and you can't have a plastic toothbrush in your house, which. Right, well, I mean, I I don't, and I'm being a little facetious there.
When people think about it, it's it's something that builders haven't really.
Right, so I guess the question for you is.
You wanna put, as you wanna store as much like wood, carbon fibers in the home as possible.
So I guess the question for the commission, just to be really clear on this point, is completely understand what Donna is saying, and is probably more accurate. However, everywhere else you have taken the exact words of the climate action plan. Do you want to modify the statement of the climate action plan? Perfectly, you're right, I just want.
I mean, it is something that we aspire to, this goal, not carbon.
No, not carbon-free.
You're full of carbon, I'm full of carbon, this desk is full of carbon, everything we have is full of carbon, we're trying to reduce carbon emissions.
Right.
And this is, this is saying carbon-free.
Carbon dioxide.
Language is put, carbon, the intent is there, but change the language to.
It's greenhouse gases, and I think Andrew brought this up the other day, instead of saying carbon, say greenhouse gas emission-free.
Yep, I think that that's.
That's good, greenhouse gas emission-free is fine.
Change it to greenhouse gas emission-free.
By four percent.
I guess that came from the climate action plan.
There must be, that must be tied to a time. The four percent.
Well, no, because it's new homes.
Right.
So in the climate action plan, in the, in the um, analysis that was done by Ickley, they assumed about a hundred and fifty homes being added a year. If you, if those hundred and fifty homes added a year were carbon-free, it would reduce over not having them carbon-free. It would be a four percent reduction. In the bestness is usual.
A bit uh, uh, contradictory to our other ordinance, which really says eighty-five percent.
Right, and and I think one correction I'd like to make, I said that this is copying the language, we don't have the word require in the ki- in the climate action plan. It just says that is the outcome, rather than a, than a, than a, it's a target rather than an outcome.
Eighty-five percent reduction in the house, but it's only a four percent reduction in our overall emissions, is what this is saying.
Yeah.
And well, if it's me, that's what it means, it needs to be rewritten, rewritten so that it reads that way.
I mean, you just, I I just think we don't wanna keep using incorrect terminology, because it's hard enough to explain this stuff to people sometime. Technically, we would, technically.
Emissions-free.
Technically, a goal would be require new homes to be carbon-negative.
Yes.
Carbon-negative would be the actual goal, but nobody's gonna understand what that means.
Can we do what what was just what Donna just suggested, which is require new homes to be uh, greenhouse gas emissions-free? And leave out everything else, to reduce the emission, leave that.
Or heating and cooling, for for heating, for heating and appliances.
Well, the, to reduce emissions is the phrasing of the actual measure.
To reduce emissions.
So just say to reduce emission, leave off the by four percent.
That's the goal.
The goal is by.
By four percent.
I think she, she just wants to replace the word carbon with the words greenhouse gas.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, and, cause then we're sticking to the goal and the plan, but being correct with the terminology.
It's fine.
Okay, anything else on energy?
Um, I did one thing, uh, we, in here, we don't talk about um, vehicle charging stations. And and I thought maybe we should have something or a goal. Uh, in multi-unit structures, where residents might not have control over. The vehicle charging stations.
Fran, I think it's in the transportation section, it is, it is in there, if it's not in here, it's, it's there.
Okay.
Um.
I guess something like.
Yeah, okay.
I have a question on the eighth bullet there, which is increase new renewable energy. Why do we have the word new? Can't we have just increased new renewable energy generation?
Okay.
Great, I can get rid of the word new, that works, or Paul Ingalls will be happy, we got rid of a word. We got rid of the word new, it's shorter.
All right.
Okay, and then you had.
Twenty-seven, the last paragraph, in addition to land use and.
Not finished on page twenty-four yet.
Oh.
Oh, okay, well.
Um. The the numbers that we are showing there don't seem to jive with what the CCRPC says, which. They say, transportation accounts for forty-eight percent of county emissions and heating fuels account for thirty-eight percent. We've got, transportation is sixty-five percent, and. Uh, residential and commercial buildings together are thirty-four.
That's directly from the climate action plan.
This is specifically for South Burlington, as opposed to for Chittenden County.
CCRPC is probably Chittenden County's.
You know, I'd, I said, uh, you know, are we sure that we wanna use the numbers we've got? Rather than the county numbers.
Right, I guess what I would say, Michael, is two things, one, um, there are some differences in methodologies that were used. Um, however, it was on contract with the CCRPC that they worked with an entity that specializes in municipal. Modeling of this, it doesn't capture every single addition of, um, it doesn't capture, you know. On-business, small energy producers like forklifts, but it's, we feel very confident in the, in the numbers.
It's just that the big difference between sixty-five percent and forty-eight percent caught my eye, and perhaps the sixty-five percent includes. The thousands of trucks that go through South Burlington on I eighty-nine. But maybe it doesn't. Uh, on the South Burlington part of I eighty-nine.
Right, there there is a, there is a description of exactly what is accounted for in there, and I don't recall off the top of my head. If the commission would like, we'd be happy to check in with the RPC about why is there, why is there a difference here? And describe that somewhere, if that's appropriate.
Or use whichever is most accurate for our purposes.
Yes, our our climate action plan uses the sixty-five thirty-four, so I'd be hesitant to use a different number here, because then the question becomes. Why is the city using two different numbers, but we could explain why there are two different numbers potentially.
Seems good. Right.
Um, I have something on page twenty-seven.
Okay.
Uh, second paragraph. Um. It, where it says at the bottom of the paragraph, examples of these gaps include, uh, so I'll note which are added words. Uh, includes four-lane roads with limited pedestrian crossings. I think we wanna, you know, because that's really where the problem is pedestrian, why?
What's the beginning of the paragraph?
Uh, to reduce overall vehicle miles traveled.
It's the second paragraph.
Second paragraph down.
Yeah, it's.
At the very bottom of that paragraph, examples of these gaps include. Or, or lessons. It's a long, well, I'm not done yet, um, include four-lane roads with pedestrian, limited pedestrian crossings.
To adding the word pedestrian.
Yeah, wide vehicle lanes with no bike lanes. Um, I'm not sure what narrow green bu- belts actually has to do with that. It it's okay if 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 it makes sense, but I don't, I don't understand.
If you walk along Williston Road, there's two feet between the sidewalk and the street, which is a very unpleasant experience for the pedestrian.
It's not much.
Right, so that's, that's the.
Okay, so, so.
Narrow green belts, that's the problem.
Them wider, is this, okay.
Um, so that's the gap, is the fact that they are narrow.
Okay. I think that's fine then.
So does wide vehicle lanes need to have the bike lanes added to it?
With, yeah, the wide vehicle lanes with no bike lanes are the problem, and thank goodness, you can see this now, what an improvement it is on Spear Street.
So the wide vehicle lanes is also because of um, increased crossing times.
Right.
Necessarily, so it's, it's not just without a bike lane, it's, it's that it takes a very long time for a. A person with a motive, mobility issue, or or just any person to get across the whole, um, the whole road without a safe median.
We get to say lack of bike lanes.
Yeah, I think.
As another one.
As a separate one.
Yeah. Lack of bike lanes, there you go.
Okay.
And and the other one, I don't really know how to fit this in, but um, we don't say anything about putting existing roadways on a diet. Narrowing them, um, taking out some pavement on existing roadways. And I think within the next ten years, we're gonna have to start doing that, you know, and also it's, it occurred to me that, you know. There, that you could reduce the amount of asphalt used by considerable amount, just by reducing road widths from, what are they, thirty? Feet to like twenty-six feet or something.
Was a discussion of transportation about retrofitting the existing transportation network in ways that Donna's speaking about.
There's some about it, you know.
So is that under transportation?
There is more of this discussion in transportation. Um. Yeah, this is, this is just this, so there's a little bit of a phrase as discussed in the transportation sector or chapter, so. Some of these, um, there are definitely topics that are overlapping between different. Sections of the plan, and so sometimes the discussion is more in one or the other, um, so I'm open to moving things, but some of what you're talking about is definitely more transportation than. Um.
That's what we're in.
We're in energy.
We are?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay. I just saw transportation.
Those are all.
Transportation at the top, but I'm like.
Right, so these are all things that would reduce vehicle miles traveled, that is, so encouraging bike pet, et cetera. That reduces vehicle miles traveled with vehicle miles traveled being an energy.
Okay.
Doesn't the next paragraph, in fact. Uh, i- is the plan to take care of the the these gaps that we've talked about, they're, they're problems that we're talking about re- re. Immunity-wide retrofit. Talks about all the same things and fixing them.
Yep.
Right, Laura, you had something on the last paragraph.
I had something quick on the last paragraph, it says, in addition to land use and infrastructure changes, personal vehicles must be. And I'd like to see.
What page?
Addition of reduced or changed over to electric. Addition of reduced or changed over to electric.
This page.
So it means surprise land is.
Changing over to electric alone is not going to get us out of this. And then I've got something on twenty-eight unless someone's before that.
Down here, something is or up there.
Right here.
Okay.
To reduce. On page.
Okay.
Um, we just finished twenty-seven, Michael.
Do I just go back to twenty-five for a second?
Right.
On the um third paragraph, which starts the city's sustained commitment. Uh, in the middle, there's a. Sentence, the pairing, the pairing of higher density residential living, and I've put community instead of human. Oriented space because human oriented space, I'm not quite sure what it is.
Oh, yeah, I noted that. Is that on page twenty-seven?
It is on page twenty-seven.
It's, I see it also in twenty-seven. A human oriented commercial space.
It is on page twenty-seven.
Shows up there too.
Michael's two pages off somehow. I think it is on twenty-seven.
Yeah, because I noted the same thing. I put smaller scale instead of.
Yeah, I think it's towards the bottom.
Word community instead of human.
Right here, it's on page twenty-seven. City sustains goes just above where we were.
Yeah, I noted that same spot.
And at the end, it says human, living and human.
Where is it? Cities.
And you wanted human change to what? So what what was the other change, Laurie? You wanted to say personal vehicles must be reduced. I always say must be reduced or changed over to electric.
Not to nitpick words, but I'm not sure that community oriented commercial space really means the same thing.
Oh, right.
What I think this was trying to say is rather than building a strip mall with parking in the front. Orient the construction to such that it is prioritizing pedestrians. So community doesn't necessarily say the same thing.
How about pedestrian oriented?
Pedestrian oriented. But, you know, environments even, it's not really necessarily.
It's right above what I was doing.
Uh, built environments.
Little paragraph, page twenty-seven.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's not my vote, but that's what I meant to say.
Oh, yeah, yeah, living or human oriented.
The whole plan is largely about humans.
Yeah. I like the way, I like the way Paul and Kelsey just repeated it. Do you see that?
No.
Pedestrian oriented something.
Built environment.
Perfect.
That's good.
Anything else in energy?
Oh, Fran, this is the discussion about EV charging is that last paragraph on twenty-seven. Just so that I saw it, so I flagged it.
For you. I know where it is.
Um, I had one slight modification. On page twenty-eight, one, two, three, fourth paragraph under building and thermal energy sector. Um, says weatherization electrification of existing homes and construction of. I've added highly efficient new homes and scratched out with electric. Based heating systems. Can have significant cost for homeowners because typically it's the, it's the additional. Um, construction um of a highly efficient home that makes it more expensive, not the heating system. The heating systems are actually sometimes less expensive, but certainly adding the additional thickness to the walls. Can, that that definitely does add cost. But the, you know, I think we we should like.
If the home's properly insulated, the heating system is almost.
It's it's a much smaller, it's a smaller system for sure, and and often it can be done with less expensive equipment as an option. Some people do put in very expensive electric. You know, dual fuel and, you know, they can do everything, but if you just build the house right, you can get away with. You can get away with relatively inexpensive.
Yep.
Um, equipment.
Um, okay.
At the last sentence of the same paragraph. The city must design a system that will not cause economic hardship for people without resources. To both change over, comma, benefit from, comma, and then operate new systems.
Where that is.
Page twenty-eight, I think you're off.
Because it's easy for. People who have. Solid means to benefit from it, it's much harder for people without funds to. And we need to. Make sure that that works for them.
What was the change again to?
Just to add.
Change over.
Right here to add benefit from.
Yeah.
Anything else in energy? That would be up to page thirty-one.
Somewhere in here, we don't talk about, and I think it would be really useful to talk about. Implementation of micro grids within the city. O'Brien Brothers is doing it at that one project and micro grids have a huge potential for. Reducing transmission costs, increasing reliability, et cetera. And um. I think there's something that that we really should be encouraging, especially in new. Uh, energy intensive uses, et cetera. Um, and I don't know exactly where in it would, here it would go, but I think micro grids are are our future.
I don't know much about it, where it would go.
I mean, I have a sentence in solar. Oh, sorry, I have a sentence in. The paragraphs starting increase on thirty, increasing solar energy generation. The the next sentence is generation of power close to where it is used reduces loss during transition, transist. Transmission and stresses the regional power grid less. Is something like.
So adding micro grids in that location would be good, so it's not just producing it, but having micro grid storage systems.
Right, is that an appropriate?
That could be an appropriate place to put it, yeah.
Okay.
I. The Tesla power walls are coming close to being micro grids in people's houses.
I don't know what else, yeah.
What if you said increasing solar energy generation, including. Micro grids. Including the use of micro grids. Oh, no. A generation of power. Close to where it is used and inclusion of or and. Use of micro grids maybe in that sense.
So I will, I'm going to just flag this because I don't want to commit to sort of a subpar location, but. I will put in a little.
That's great.
Comment.
Great. Okay, anything else in energy or are we ready to move on to environment? I'm realizing we're on page thirty-two and it's pretty late.
We're just flying through this.
At high hopes of flying through.
Waiting on that first paragraph, I think um we're we're not facing an exec, an existential climate crisis. We are facing an existential threat from the climate crisis. And protection of our natural resources is a priority for South Burlington.
Yeah, I put prime focus, same thing.
You know. I I'd love to go back to the numbers on the Climate Action Plan because. Keeping the natural environment that we have is an important, important part of it. But it struck me that, you know. Even though we'd love to add more trees because it's going to have a beneficial effect and adding landscaping and all that stuff is beneficial. It, I think it's worth noting that. That's, that's not a solution that will get you. Um, very far, you have to do the the thermal. You have to do the thermal stuff, you know, because I I talk to people and they think, oh, we're going to solve this whole climate crisis by planting trees, and I'm like. No, you're not, but you know, because I I get a little thing, you know, for my solar system every month, and it says. You've saved the equivalent of three trees.
Right.
You know, it's like, oh, that's not much, but you know, people don't seem to understand that, and there might be some way to. I just said, note that the impact of reduced fossil fuel use. Is significantly higher than savings from trees and. Trees and natural resources.
I think.
And you know, not saying that we don't want to keep those things and save those things and expand on them, but that the 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 level of. Greenhouse gas reduction. Isn't commensurate with the other, the other measures.
So I I guess that I think that is made my, from my perspective, I think that's made clear in the focus that's in the energy and transportation and other sections, and it runs through the plan. Here, I think the second sentence is actually very important. Because it is hi, it's highlighting that the natural resources, we're we're prioritizing the natural resources in this section and in this plan. Not just for carbon sequestration.
Right.
And for for things, it's for all of these other things that we will need to be doing. To mitigate the inevitable. Climate change that we're facing and and sort of do the best we can. With what we know we're going to be facing, so it's some of these things like the flood resiliency was is very much on the front of our minds today, especially. Um, but air and water quality, um, human health and well-being, all of those things I think are called out in that next sentence, um, in a way that I think.
I agree with all, everything you said.
Okay.
I I I agree with all that, it's just that I keep having to explain.
And Donna, to your number, it's the 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 existence of. Our trees or the not losing of trees over the next. Decade represents about five percent of our total. Right, it's insignificant. Five percent into the into the credit side, but it is not. To your point, it is not the panacea.
Right.
It's 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 a component, but.
It's a component of of emissions, but it's a very large component of environmental stability.
Right.
And without environmental stability. Um, the changes are going to be signi- significantly more impactful.
Yeah, and and I don't think we even talk anywhere about, you know. The benefit, well, I think there there are some benefits in in terms of adding landscaping trees and stuff like that, but.
There is some discussion of street trees in particular.
Yeah, but it's, it's it's like. You know, it's something that you really notice when you bite through neighborhoods that didn't add many trees, even if you have street trees, lacking yard trees. Those are hot places these days.
Yeah.
I have a question about the fifty-one percent that's in the second paragraph and also in our environmental goals. If we already have approximately fifty-one percent of South Burlington conserved. Then having a goal of at least fifty-one percent seems a little short because we're already there. Or am I missing something?
Well, fifty-one percent of the city's land area is in some way. We would categorize it as designated in that manner. It doesn't mean it's necessarily conserved.
Okay.
So it's zoned for, um, the city might own it. This was trying to capture where you landed after the environmental protection rules were adopted.
Could we use the word protected instead of? Concerned.
Say protect at least.
Sure. That's a, that's a stronger, that's that's a more clear word for that purpose. And I think that probably captures. More of the work to be done. Um, in terms of protecting because, you know, we're not necessarily, just because a wetland is regulated, doesn't mean it's it's actively being.
Protected.
That we haven't necessarily worked with the homeowners associations to make sure people aren't mowing to the edge of it.
Yeah.
It's mapped, but not necessarily.
And the paragraph above that is talking about our working lands. And. Sort of how they have historic uses, et cetera. But it doesn't talk about preservation of those lands.
It's talked about later.
Okay.
This is some of the the stuff that goes before the goals and actions is the sort of. Section introduction, yeah.
Okay.
Right, yeah, that's right here.
So all of the, all of the things that are in that section are then in more detail later.
Um, Fran, you had something?
Yep, excuse me, uh, uh, when I saw the fifty-one percent conserved. It. The way I felt, okay, we can relax, we're we're halfway there. It seemed like it's a really high percentage and I didn't, I didn't know, is there another way to phrase that? It looks like we we have a lot more work to do. We say we're fifty-one percent conserved and forty-one percent uh built.
Right.
Are we, are we there? We don't have to worry because that number is so high. I don't know, that's what hit me when I first read it.
We do have to worry when things like S one hundred come up.
I mean, maybe conserved of there is not the right word either.
Didn't we just change that to protected? Isn't that the same spot we're talking about?
I heard that we were changing the word in the goal to protect.
Because ab- above it, it references the different.
Oh, yeah. Above it says conserve.
Protect.
Is targeted for conservation in some form, tar- targeted for or is?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. In the, in the, in the analysis portion?
It's in the introduction portion.
Right, that's what I mean.
Okay.
Doesn't matter.
I had a couple of questions on the. Environment actions.
That's more a statement of.
Right, actions, page thirty-three.
You know, the um. Actively engage in removal of non-native and invasive, this is like typo because the landowner is a land owner. But you might have picked that up already. I didn't see that it was changed, landowner.
Did it?
You got it?
No.
And then we have conserve mapped habitat blocks and seek opportunities to connect to adjacent natural areas. Are they not already conserved in a sense, or are they just protected?
I would say they are just protected.
So do we want to move, do, is a, is an action to try and move from protected to conserved, and what would that entail? I don't think. Uh, you know, conserve normally means you've got a conservation easement on something.
Right.
I think that's what the action is. To move to conserve.
To get it conserved.
Is, that's the question.
That is, yeah, I think the answer is yes. Says that.
And I'd like to see us add one bullet to the environment actions. Which is to create a citywide tree ordinance.
That's in the works, I believe.
I I know it's in the works, but it's not here yet, so.
So we do have set citywide and district level tree canopy targets. Is it related to, different from?
It's related to, but different from in that. Currently. Well, it just happened on the O'Brien land. That a massive. Section of forest got denuded. And. There's nothing that is. Protecting specimen trees on private property or. Other locations and. Our. Our canopy is a pretty important community asset, even if it's on private land, and I don't know how we deal with that. But I know that there's an ordinance that's being started. And. I doubt it's could be done before this plan is written. Now, so I thought it should be part of the plan so that it reinforces it.
Yep. Uh, I had a question about the. Encourage new development, particularly residential or mixed-use projects that include homes without private yards. To create. Community garden space. I thought we could maybe shorten it and say encourage the inclusion of community garden space in residential projects. I know, or or add that. But it encouraged the inclusion. Of garden, community garden space in residential projects. The. Preceding part is a lot of. Words that might not make the impact. And the next one, which was create a map showing. Built and unbuilt. Uh, I put there as a note, show those in the future land use map. Uh, I put there as a note, show those in the future land use map, one of the layers.
So that's something we have in process right now. So we're just.
And the very last, um, bullet point.
Analysis tool to do other things. It's not a goal in and of itself.
Yep.
Creating updated lighting ordinance, I think that should go into the energy.
So it was included here because the intention was light pollution, not necessarily energy use.
Right, because our electric grid is carbon free, so in theory we could light the sun. We could light the sun in theory and it wouldn't affect our energy goals. Because it's, we're on, we're on a carbon-free electric.
So this is a, a lighting ordinance to reduce light pollution?
Yes.
Then we should say so.
I would say to maybe right size in consideration of, because it's not necessarily reduced, because where there's none today, but.
Right size is dark skies.
I think we're gonna get that, uh, Northern Lights this week.
Thursday.
Yeah.
If it's clear, yeah.
What did you write there? Sorry, Kelsey, I didn't see what you wrote there. Uh, create an updated lighting ordinance to right size.
Lighting.
Right, light pollution. Is there, is there such a thing as the right size of, of light pollution?
I don't know.
No. All right, Michael.
There weren't more qualifiers on create updated lighting ordinance, because it's hard to phrase the next thing.
So leave it right size lighting for now.
I just leave it.
Fine.
The lighting ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay. My computer has twenty five minutes of battery, so just FYI.
In other words, twenty five minutes until I can have dinner.
I don't know how you eat dinner after these meetings. It's for you to decide.
Yeah, it's tomorrow.
Fran.
Just had a couple thoughts in here. One was, uh, on the goal, on the fifty percent on the community gardens. Uh, I, I inquired, Kelsey helped me ask who, who to ask on that, but we, we have, uh, I think we have, uh, someplace between forty three and sixty four plots, depending on how you divide it. And forty seven people on the waiting list. So I thought we need to increase the garden plots by a hundred percent to kind of clear the waiting list.
Yeah.
But we only have two actual.
Right.
They have more. By the number of plots.
Yeah.
The goal is listed by plots, Michael.
I had suggested in another forum that some of the land that is open around near the airports um, would be great for community gardens and that would.
It is being discussed.
Beg your pardon?
It is being discussed.
Natural Resources Committee is discussing the subject.
Well, I think.
And they'll provide headphones for anybody that's gardening there.
I think that, um, that falls into the, the distributed locations. So that's already in the goal, like different spots. And I completely support your one hundred percent increase because it's, it's hard. I wound up getting, you know, having, having to go to Burlington Gardens for a really long time, so.
They said that there's forty seven on the list and there's only between two and four that open up every year. So if we can do that. Um, the other thing I was wondering about is on, um, on, in the action item, uh, about promoting replacement of, uh, lawns, where's the, how does that read? Actively promote replacement of lawns with shrubs, trees. If we could, uh, include something about maybe native plants and native and, uh, pollinator species.
Yep.
So that we're, we're replacing with native plants and not, uh, in potentially invasive plants.
Yeah, that's true, but you do have to consider that, um, plants that are not native here right now will be predominant in twenty years.
Yeah, right.
So you have to be careful about you know, native to here.
Gonna move.
Native to here is gonna work better in Canada in twenty years.
But it's not a reason to jump what he suggested though, right?
Everybody suggesting is good.
Even if, even if native migrates, maybe.
I think there's also a difference between native to right here in North America versus native to North America. Instead of Europe or Japan, that's when we come into bigger problems.
Right.
Native to Connecticut will now be native to Vermont, maybe.
Indigenous means here.
But, um, did we get the pollinator part?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so that's in there. Okay, anything else? Especially on the goals and actions of environment?
Well, I did have one other little note. I, I think there's some, uh, I, I said something about adding an action item for actively engaging between the city and, and, uh, homeowner associations. I think there's discussion about, um, neighborhood associations, but I think in those communities where there's a home, an actual homeowners association as part of the development, that they, they may be looked at differently and maybe we should engage with them because they might have more ability to make change within the development for things like lawns and, uh, plants and, and that. I don't, I don't know how to do that, but it was a thought that went through my mind.
Um, I would, I would say in my, in my mind, that kind of, um, partnership and outreach is things that we would do to do these. It's like a way to do these actions, so it's kind of one tier down as, as people we would reach out to. Um, so it wouldn't necessarily be identified.
Okay.
Yeah. But, you know, it's a good suggestion. I mean, we had a suggestion earlier about, um, in the introduction, adding a general statement about how collaboration is needed to achieve the goals. Like, I wonder if it's worth there giving some examples of what the collaborations might be, like homeowners associations or nonprofits or you know, what it could look like overarching.
And I think it would perhaps be more successful today than it was in the years that when I arrived here, because my association and the neighboring one both had community gardens, which lasted about two years and then it became a weed patch. Today, there's much more interest in it. So I think encouraging homeowners association and condo associations to do it would be more successful.
Um, okay, uh, anything in the, the text of the environment section?
One very tiny, just a little correction on page forty under light pollution.
Before we get to forty, I got something on page thirty five.
This is a little, let me just, let me just get it. Um, where it says to be full cutoff and downcast and shielded basically means the same thing. So instead of saying full cutoff type or downcast and shielded, say full cutoff type, comma, I E, downcast and shielded. Cause, cause they mean the same thing. And if people aren't familiar with the term, they might think it means something else. They, they mean the same thing.
Okay, and then back to thirty five for Lori.
Thirty five, a quick under working lands. The last paragraph in the first, the last sentence in the first paragraph, maintaining the working, I would like to say status of the remaining working lands. Instead of maintaining the character of some South Burlington lands. Because we're talking about the working lands and we don't have many of them left and trying to maintain the status of the remaining working lands is what I would like to see our mission to be.
Seems reasonable.
That's a good one.
I have kind of just an overarching comment. So I, I was, um, you know, with my background in like rivers and flooding and flood plains, like I kind of went searching for all the water-related stuff and like our old plan had kind of like the blue section and, you know, it was kind of centralized and, um, and here it's kind of spread throughout and I I, I think it's okay, um, you know, that we're talking about it with the utility with stormwater and we're talking about it here with the environment. We're talking about with the all hazards plan somewhere else and for the community services, because I, I think it makes sense. You know, at first I was like, why is it all over the place? But then it's, it's almost a little bit like our discussion about climate change or energy, like it does hit in all these different areas. So I guess I just wanted to like.
We were finding that it was becoming a less and less, um, it was becoming more and more contrived to talk about water that goes through pipes in the same section as water that flows through streams and, and watersheds that, yes, it's both water, but they're at very opposite ends of the universe to talk about, you know, sewer pipes versus a wetland.
Yeah.
And it felt more float, trying not to use a water pun in my sentence and I'm running out of brain power to do it. It seemed to be a better fit to talk about it in environment, to talk about it in utilities, because it, it, it seemed like a, a place where the public would more likely find it.
Yeah, and I, I didn't find something that I felt like was missing, but I, I wanna, especially after like having all this flooding again today, like I feel wanna like take another look back and look at the old goals again in kind of the new light. And so I might come back to you and feel like, oh, I want to add this goal about water, because I feel like because it got split up, it was hard to folk, you know. Um, and I guess the other point about that is that during Irene and now we were lucky to have not gotten as much rain as other places. Like we were comparing rain gauges with friends and other locations and um, you know, it's not that we're necessarily doing something better or that we need to like, we can take a break. Um, you know, we actually did, again, luckily get less rain, so.
Right, and I think this is a good point to underscore something that our stormwater department flagged for us that is in the plan, but we didn't necessarily talk a ton, ton about, which is that we can at the same time be very proud that we have one of the strongest most active and most accomplished stormwater departments in the city and we have a ton of work to be done to meet our flow restoration plans of the next eight years and that the next eight years are going to be harder than the last ten years because the easy projects have been accomplished. And so they wanted to really underscore that there may be some hard decisions that come up in the future about, you know, decisions that get made of, do we protect forest land or do we get more w- water treatment in some areas? Or do we, there's, or you know, neighborhood parks versus or whatever it might be that it's getting to hard choices. Um, and big dollars and hard choices.
And big dollars.
And big dollars.
Uh, Michael?
Under the wetlands section on page thirty eight. Um, just a correction, we have, we've got a sentence which starts incremental reduction and I think that is a, an oxymoron, you maybe loss of minor wetlands would be a better word. In, I know you can increase reduction, but generally it doesn't.
Incremental meaning little bites.
Yeah.
Like step-by-step reduction, like, like losing a foot of wetland.
Well, then it's, you can say in, in incremental losses.
Yeah, using the word loss seems reasonable there instead of reduction. It's.
And.
Yeah.
Stream channels where the city should explore, develop. I think you meant to say the city, city should explore the development of more advanced stream channel.
Where are?
Uh, last sentence in the stream channels and repair and buffers. For the development of.
Yep.
I got a couple of quick ones still on thirty five and thirty six.
Sure.
And thirty five actually relates to page forty. The top paragraph on page forty, I would like to see moved to the agriculture section because it's really specifically talking about agriculture. And
Which, what is?
South Burlington's agriculture landscape is part of the city's cultural heritage. Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But it's talking about, uh, agriculture operation is a priority for the city for food production, climate resilience. And preserve views and open spaces that I think really fits more accurately in the agriculture section.
And final that, if others aren't.
And there's a section in the paragraph, last sentence of the paragraph under agriculture that's there now that says the city will need to continue to evolve and adapt, balance the positive and negative impacts for its residents. I'm not sure that that really says a whole lot. What evolving and adapting is gonna do or how it's evolving and adapting. So I just thought that could be reworked somehow. And then another quick one on thirty six, the second paragraph. Uh, the second line, but more space exists for new ventures. How needs to be turned?
With all the changes, my pages have changed from yours. What does that paragraph start with?
It starts with smaller commercial opportunities.
Yep. What are you?
And then the second line, I'm not adding. It says comma, but more space exists for new ventures. Which is incorrect English or something.
Exists.
Okay. And it talks about, uh, agritourism, community events and educational opportunities to support and enable this stuff. And I didn't know if we should say through incentives, impact, would it, some, how do we do that? Or does it just get left saying that we're gonna try to do that?
I think it can be left open.
Okay.
All right, we are nearing our end point. Um, well, let's, let's try to get through the environment section here and then have a.
I had one question on noise pollution, which is on page forty. As the city's land use patterns evolve, noise pollution may migrate and are worthy of examine. I'm not sure what we mean by that. Unless it's just
What, sorry?
Noise pollution may also migrate or or did you mean something else?
What, where are we?
And, and page forty under noise pollution.
Seem like a funny.
I know that means, that's obvious, but.
And is worthy of examination?
May also be worthy of examination, is it?
And is worthy of examination.
Then I had a question about in the actions, should we, should we add an action uh, to have a noise pollution ordinance for cars, trucks, motorcycles, et cetera, et cetera, not to exceed so and so many decibels.
I think that's a much larger policy discussion that hasn't been had by the planning commission or city council. Some of these ordinance things are actually outside of the planning commission. It's city council.
Yeah, but it could go in here as a recommendation. Because I personally.
I couldn't, I it's extremely difficult to regulate. It's ins- extremely difficult to enforce.
Yes.
Um, it would put a lot of, sorry, my, my chrome is not on. It would put a lot on necessarily our, um, police and it's, 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 it's a lot. So
Difficult.
So putting, putting something in, I don't, I would not recommend putting in anything stronger than consider. Like I wouldn't necessarily say adopt, I would say consider.
Actions, uh, consider would be good.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, um, you, I know the police would have a hard time enforcing it. Although I'll tell you about my own experience, but, um, but, um, the people who sell the vehicles can sell them with a maximum sound noise. Uh, when I was a, when I was a teenager and had a high-speed motorcycle, I was stopped by a policeman uh, who said my bike is too noisy. And so I, I said, I was gonna give a little bit of gas, but. And so I, I said, I was gonna give a little bit of gas, but he said, rev it up. And of course. I was outside the range. And he gave me a ticket, that's not gonna happen here.
Could we make it more general?
Consider.
Could we, no, 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 I mean, um, not to only apply to vehicles, could we say consider noise reduction?
Measures?
Some, yeah, so, yeah, something more generally measures, so it's not only about vehicles because.
Or rules.
So I included the bullet. Is that close? Is it too squishy, is it?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Possible, you know.
Cuz it's got a lot worse lately.
Yeah, and it's something that's came up um, multiple times in the last year, Monica brought it up and it, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on the environment section that's up to page forty?
She already killed the ox.
Ox got fixed.
Done with ox examination.
She slaughtered the ox, this is not a veterinary.
Madam Chair, can we set a time limit?
Well, yes, that's what I was getting at, um, so we are only, we only got to put page forty. And some people even had some things that aren't even in the text. The whole document is, you know, whatever, like, um, like a hundred pages, so. I suppose maybe I haven't handled this well, but um. We're not gonna finish tonight, I guess I can, I can say that unless no one else has any comments on the whole rest of the thing. Which is not likely.
It's a hundred and twenty-two pages, including all the maps.
Okay, so I think um, what we should try to figure out now as a group is what do we? I don't think it's appropriate for us to just like. Outside of a meeting, say okay to a bunch of stuff, which is why we know we've been kinda working through comments and just giving people a chance to speak up. Instead of just sticking stuff in outside of a meeting, um. So I do think there's merit in what we've been doing tonight, because I think it's important to do this in the public. I don't know what the best plan is, we, we do have um, all the way until. August eighth. To kind of continue this discussion, but we do have a bunch of stuff on our calendar between now and then, so. Like it feels like we probably need to add a meeting to be able to continue this discussion.
Since we already have the package. If we send. Our comments to Kelsey. She'll, it'll, in time, well, well before August or whatever the, the next date is. You'll be able to have it in, in that packet, so, and all of us will be able to read it beforehand.
To include everyone's comments?
Well, I, I think, no, I think we'll have to, we'll have to talk about them and agree which to accept and which to scrub. But since there's a long, the time between uh, our next, I mean, the twenty-fifth isn't. A meeting that we can do that at.
Correct.
And the listening sessions are, which are volunteered, which we've all volunteered, aren't gonna be times for that, so. August the eighth is probably the next opportunity, is that right?
Well, I.
I think we need another meeting next week.
Right, ideally, August eighth would be your time to digest what you've heard from the public rather than all of your own. Feedback, so perhaps sometime between now and August eighth.
I would also say there were a few comments that were um. Less wording and more like whole cloth substance, um, that I don't feel comfortable just plopping into a. The draft to then distribute, they would need to be discussed before that happened, um. So I don't know if there's a better way to do it than the way that we've been doing it.
Oh, I know, that's why we've been doing it this way, um, I, do you feel like there's been a few things that got brought up that were like a typo, which I think can just, we can just.
There are a bunch of those which I'm gonna leave entirely to Kelsey because they don't.
Yep.
They're not, they don't affect the policy or anything like that, they're just language, she can use them or not use them.
Okay.
I didn't bring, I didn't cover all those here.
Okay. I would, I would also just, just quickly note that not, that there are, have been. Changes that people have asked for, that it was a quick consensus amongst the group, but then there was more discussion. That wasn't strictly necessary, so maybe next time we meet to. Reduce editorializing, it would be faster.
Okay.
The changes that have been made tonight, are they going into the draft that the public will see?
No.
No. Nothing happens until August eighth.
Correct. The draft remains static and this is, this is considered like a collective comment of the commission.
So why don't, why don't we just pick this up on August eighth?
Because the intention of August eighth is to be considering all public comment that has been received at that point, which could be significant. And when this took an entire meeting to get to page forty-three. I would be, I would be very skeptical of getting through with the public comment and entity comments and committee comments and all of this. In a single meeting.
Well, it's gonna take us probably four hours to get through, at least to get through the rest of the pages, right?
Now, I think the rest of it's gonna go faster from my.
I mean, I think, I think some of the hea-, some of the heavy hitters like energy and environment we've done, um.
Intro, we spent.
Intro, we had a lot of time on the intro.
That was something we'd only seen once.
Speaking for myself, I had.
I know that everybody's kind of burnt, but is there any option of spending another half hour and seeing how far we.
Can we get through transportation?
That's what I'm wondering if there, if you can get through another couple of sections, it feels a little.
At least one section. Okay, let's do transportation and we'll set.
See how it goes.
Is next Tuesday an option?
Not for me.
Nope.
So you're down two, so you'd have five.
Tuesday the eighteenth?
Yeah.
Yep.
Works for me.
So why don't we see how far we get in a half hour and have the eighteenth to finish up?
That sounds good.
Um, didn't, I thought we heard several.
Donna and, and Paul Engels. Could not be here on the eighteenth.
Okay. Um, just in deference to Paul, I know Paul, you had something.
Oh, right.
That's not in the plan of some substance that you wanted to talk about. I would like to make sure that you have the opportunity to do that.
Okay.
At some point.
Yeah, so if we're gonna meet on the eighteenth, um, um, so I guess if Paul or. Donna have things that you wanna bring up specifically, but Paul, you wanna go first, you to.
Right now, rather than finish this up?
Well, if you, if we are, if the plan is to meet next Tuesday and you are not available, then I do think it makes sense to cover your. Thing now, just to make sure we do that.
So Kelsey sent um, my suggestions out. Um, basically, the two suggestions are that we uh, reach out to our neighborhoods. Um, encourage neighborhood associations to form and to become invol- involved in city politics. And uh, to take advantage of existing organizations, a lot of condo associations, renter associations. That we could, um, you know, help. Organize the city, uh, bring us together more and uh, have people more involved in our city government by reaching out to them. Um, and have a, oh, you know, have that part of the plan so that we're actually doing that. Um, and the other is, uh. I would say complimentary to that, that, uh, and it could be done simultaneously, I would think. Is to involve people, uh, in what I call the. A citizen-centric approach to government, where people, where the citizens of the. Of the city of South Burlington are involved in planning activities. You know, which to some extent we do, I mean, by having public meetings and things like that, but to really become, you know, directed towards that and. And uh, and actively uh, pursuing that approach to city government, so those are the two. But I had, and I've got both a long form of both of them and then. Uh, Kelsey asked me for a condensed form and what you have are the condensed forms.
Okay.
I like the idea of the active neighborhood associations and I think it goes in line with considering setting up wards for. Uh, our city councillors as well. Which sort of mirrors what Burlington, Burlington has done. I think that would be. A great thing for South Burlington to aspire to so that. Our. Ward system can have neighborhood planning assemblies that can feed to their councillors and feed to the. The city council. That would be great, I'm on the um, charter committee however, and we meet tomorrow afternoon at four. And I think the likelihood of that committee recommending wards is pretty remote at this point. So.
I like the idea of neighborhood associations because in fact, in, in a microcosm. My, or my uh, development is organized that way. They call them green captains, but there's a person who is the point person for. All the homes in a particular green, in our case, it happened to be four homes, but there are others where there are twenty-eight and sixteen. And three and seven, and each of them has a point person, so. Uh, we've got a good example of that in the Chamberlain.
Yeah, I mean.
But, you know, how to, how to get it done in other areas, you have to find somebody who's willing. To put in the time.
Yeah, well, there's some cities that have taken this approach to uh, addressing the climate crisis, you know, that uh. You know, that people are becoming actively involved in, and are deeply involved in, in the, in the work that they're doing. I mean, it is the approach that the city is taking to address the, the climate crisis, I think Amsterdam, for example, is doing that.
One small suggestion that we might have from the staff end is maybe to use slightly broader language than neighborhood associations. Um, we have dozens of condo associations and we're at the scale of. We would not necessarily be able to achieve the um. Community-based planning that Paul is talking about at a like fifty to a hundred of them, whereas in the Burlington example, there are. Four or five neighborhood planning assemblies, something that sort of speaks to scale, because there are. Five within the golf course itself, and that can be unifying, but it also can be dividing. Because the people who live next to the golf course who may have a neighborhood interest are excluded from that discussion. So you, you wouldn't necessarily wanna have such micro scale that it's. You know, the, the Baycrest Park example was, it was a good example a few years ago of where there was one group and another group, and they're all part of the neighborhood, but they were fighting each other by their associations. That we may wanna just use language that it talk, it talks about inclusivity here, but. Maybe doesn't use the word so, neighborhood association, cuz that's a very precise.
We could use our five planning areas as, as one way of doing it, which really speaks to.
And it might be more than five, but less than a hundred.
Or we could do it based on the uh, on the ward system that we have for vote, for voting. Something that already exists and creates. An organization within that system.
The structure by which people that can, can communicate with the city and vice versa, that isn't just individuals or.
Yeah.
And thousand people.
Whatever it's based on, Burlington's neighborhood pet, planning assemblies. Model works really well.
Do we, I guess I have a question about that, so the. I definitely think the idea of. Groups based on where people are and increased communication and all of those things sound really good, but I guess I'm. Wondering if we're talking about like a ward system or some new layer of city government. Is. Would this be a thing we would just put in here, or is this something like you'd have to, like the charter committee would have to do? Like, I guess I'm just wondering if it's appropriate.
I don't think so, no.
For the, this plan or.
I guess I've actually thought of, you know, like sharing it with Jesse Baker, that it's a kind of thing that could be done administratively if you want to, I mean. It's an approach to government that you could take with the staff, you know, so I don't see it as something that, uh. You know, that would require um. Charter change or charter committee or anything like that, I mean, to me, this is more like. An administrative approach to government, really, that, that I would hope that we would encourage in the comprehensive plan.
Oh, I mean, it occurs to me that um. Um, you're, you're, you're thinking about it more from the governmental standpoint and I'm, I'm thinking about it as. You know, encouragement, cuz s- some of these measures certainly do apply at a community level. And the associations made me think, well, you know, neighborhood associations where they already exist. Are kind of an ideal way of organizing it because the houses are all built at the same time in those neighborhoods and. The, you know, like a place like um, Stonehedge, they've all got the same problem there, you know. Their houses are built the same time and they all have the same problems.
Yeah.
And, you know, my neighborhood's newer, um, and there's some condos and there's some single-family houses, but. You know, those houses were built by the same two builders and largely at the same time, so. The, the kinds of issues that get discussed, you know, like lack of two hundred amp service. Uh, that's mostly, you know, good, good in the neighborhood, has that same problem and.
I was thinking.
They can help solve the problems because somebody's already tried.
Yeah, I was thinking about that when we're having the discussion about, you know, building inspectors and things like that, I mean. A lot of what happens is the, you know, the, the developers. Basically dump their homes after they're finished building them on condo associations or tenant associations or. Even neighborhood associations, you know, so that it becomes, you know, legally your responsibility to. Uh, you know, to take responsibility for whatever failure there may be in the construction of. Of the home that you live in, you know, so, I, I don't know if I wanna get into all that, I mean, the neighborhood could get into that. I can say by illustration in our neighborhood, uh, Eastwoods. You know, we had the Liberty Mound here, and for years, which was just terrible, you know, I mean, it was drugs and prostitution and everything you think of. And our neighborhood took on that problem and now we have, you know, the executive offices of. The medical center on the corner of, and, you know, things have changed, I mean, things have really different in the neighborhood, you know, so. You know, you can organize and you can get things done and make things happen, I just think the city should encourage that, I think it would be a good way. To govern, I think it's a good way to govern, you know.
Yeah, having a common foe usually strengthens those conversations, for sure.
I guess something that I would wanna add is the um. I, from the staff perspective, I think that it is appropriate to what things that we were saying, that you all, you all were saying before about. Um, collaboration, engagement with reaching out to partners and having examples of those kinds of partners. Um, including a little more language about public outreach and intentional public outreach, we're doing some of that stuff. On the staff side, anyway, the municipal planning grant from last fall, we did get that, so we're working on and going to be working on an equity toolkit, like. For in outreach, there's a lot of communication things and outreach things that we are doing and I'm. I'm very comfortable including that kind of language and collaboration and partnership and all of that in the plan. I am not as comfortable with um. It taking on any form of government structure change, I don't think that's the realm of this plan, I don't think it's the realm of the planning commission. Um, there are other entities like the charter committee, um, and the city manager and the city council. That that kind of discussion needs to occur through and not through. The commission just making a statement in a plan, so that's where I'm, that's, that's all I'm, that's where I'm at.
I'm definitely not proposing any structural change with this at all, and that is appropriately done through the charter committee. And as I said, by, I'll know after tomorrow, I think we're probably gonna vote on things tomorrow. But I'd be surprised if the, if the charter committee recommends any. Any kind of structural change, much less any major structural change to the city, city council. And I don't know that it would be well received with the city council if we did, so, I just, you know, I've been beating my head against the wall with this for a year and. There just is not the support for major change like that at all.
But it is, it is a good way of communicating with, with the residents of the city though, because I think. But it is, it is a good way of communicating with the, with the residents of the city though, because I think. Uh, it's amazing how little people recognize, you know, it's like, I'm on the planning commission, you'd think some of the people from my neighborhood would be curious. Oh, what's the planning commission doing, what are you talking about? Careless, they really don't care.
I, I mean, I think it's great ideas uh, that Paul has put out, but uh, it, it has the potential to create a lot of work. If there's significant input. I mean, if there's really a lot that will, that will take up a lot of our time. In the public input, in the public comment sections, if that's where it's gonna go.
I don't know, Kelsey, I also want to acknowledge that I believe that it, that I'm proposing this in a. You know, in a, in a positive environment, I mean, I, I think that's the kind of staff that you have and the kind of leadership that we have now. So I think it's possible to propose this, you know, so.
I think Kelsey was just saying, um, maybe having it worded, so it's not a governmental structure. But like, all the things that you had written about inclusivity and communication and. All seem good, that, I think it was just about the government structure piece, which it sounds like maybe you didn't mean to, mean that.
Yeah, and I shouldn't rely on a change of structure, I mean, I really think that this, I think they're already doing this administratively. And I think it's the kind of thing that can be done administratively, and we should just encourage it, you know?
Right, um, so there were some actions on there, um. I don't, this, seem like, might make sense to add, but I'm not sure where they would go. Would they, would it be part of like?
Would, would the commission be open to me um, taking what Paul presented and kind of. Working on it a bit and working on it in, through the lens of what I said about it being through inclusivity and communication and, and some of that, like. Uh, governmental transparency and making that super clear, and then hopefully finding a place that, that makes sense. Like, my brain thinks the community section um, makes the most sense, um, but there's a way, I think, to. Kind of slot it in and also make it fit with the, the, the tone and the phrasing of the rest of the plan and also um. Make it very clear exactly um, that it, that it's about government transparency and communication and outreach. And not about sort of circumventing other policy conversations that I've had in other bodies.
Cause we'll see it again.
Add one piece to add to it, which is um, I think that this. Perspective could work really well, um, specifically in the climate issue that we have. And that um. Fostering some sort of uh. Community action group that's specifically focused on the climate crisis and having climate captains or whatever. Could be a. A really powerful place to get our citizens engaged in how we protect ourselves over the next ten years.
Yeah, there are cities that are taking that approach.
And, and I'll say, Paul, the uh, Laurie, that, that was a theme broadly in a lot of the community conversations for a bunch of reasons of neighbors. Better knowing neighbors, both to inspire from a climate perspective, general quality of life, um, you know, looking after elderly on a cold day. All the reasons helping to build community, and that was one of the things that's in the intro of a, a bit of a crisis of community, of people feeling disconnected. Which is certainly not unique to South Burlington, but that theme, and so there's ways in which we can talk about it, not just as outreach, but.
It's community buildings.
Community.
Kelsey too, you might, you know, by way of uh, example, you know, include the twenty sixteen Chamberlain neighborhood. Uh, study that everybody participated in or the airport uh. You know, the airport zoning change committee, I mean, the Chamberlain Committee, Chamberlain Neighborhood has done a lot of that kind of stuff. Where they've organized and where they've become active politically because they're organized as a neighborhood, so. And that, you know, we have those documents to, to show us that, you know, so. Not to. Not to belabor the political part of it, but it's like, we're not inventing the wheel here, we're kind of like acknowledging the wheel, you know, so.
Right, I'm just trying to write it in a way that is inclusive to the whole city. And also acknowledging that this is something that we should be doing better as a city overall. Um, whether or not a, a commu-, a neighborhood or an area decided to form an association, like, we need to be communicating better with everybody. And like, so there's a bit of a. Bit to it.
I just think it's a good idea to acknowledge the Chamberlain Neighborhood, you know, they, they need acknowledgement, you know?
Anything else, Paul, from your items?
So I mean, there's the citizen-centric, but it's, you know, there are two sides of the same coin, really, you know, so.
Um, Donna, any, anything big, or you can?
There was only one comment I had on the whole transportation section, if I could just make it now, then I, then I don't have to write it in later on. Um, most of this I thought was, was, was fine, uh, on page forty-three. Um, there's one very large paragraph that starts different sections of the arterial roads. And if you go down to the. Seven, twelve, thirteenth line down. It's, it's saying about Heinsberg Road currently focuses on serving through traffic despite increased residential development. And changing traffic patterns and user needs, and I just wanted to add that demand slower vehicle speeds. And that was the only addition I had.
I think someone else had made a suggestion, we try to finish the um. This section, the transportation section. Anything else in transportation? Sounded like my god, none. Fran, anything in your comments? Okay, then maybe, maybe we're done with transportation, which is super exciting. I, are we, do we feel like this is the spot where we wanna? Hold up, hold up? Sure. Um, so I guess just to be clear, we.
Cause I didn't look at them yet.
We will have a meeting next Tuesday.
Um, we are going to have to potentially be creative about where you meet.
Cause the DRB is here.
And the elevator is not functioning.
So we'll see if the elevator is functioning.
So we may be in senior center.
Oh, I like the senior center.
Might be in the hallway. We'll work on a space.
We'll figure it out.
Okay, we'll pick up at the community history and culture section, um, and we're gonna try to be real focused. Cut down conversation.
Right, yeah, I think there's really not a lot of comments on these last sections.
I mean, do people have more they wanna talk about? I mean, it is true.
I have some things in the um, once we get to the uh, land use plan section.
Okay, so it sounds like we should still meet next week.
Yeah, I'm ready, I'm ready to go.
Okay, I'm, we'll adjourn and meet next Tuesday.
Just need four of you to walk out.
And so we are talking the eighteenth at seven o'clock.